Okay, good evening, everyone. We are on the record. Today is Wednesday, the 13th day of January 2021. This is a regular meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council in effort to adhere to social distancing protocols and best practices imposed by the city and state authorities. The City of Jersey City has canceled all public meetings and closed nonessential services as of March 16th, 2020, until further notice. As a result, this council meeting will be held virtually as a video conference with public access. We had a scheduled 6:00 p.m. start. The clock on my computer is showing 6:04 p.m. May we have a roll call for the commencement of this meeting? Councilperson Ridley.
Here.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Here.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Yeah.
Councilperson Saleh. Not here yet, okay. Councilperson Solomon.
Here.
Councilperson Robinson.
Here.
Councilperson Lavaro.
Here.
Councilperson Rivera.
Here.
And Council President Waterman.
Here.
We have eight council members in attendance at 6:04 p.m. Can we kindly rise for a moment of silence, please? Karen Oliver Fair.
Bob McIntosh.
Thank you so much. Kindly remain standing as we salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. On behalf of Council President Waterman, in accordance with New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meeting Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the posting on the bulletin board of the first floor of City Hall, the annual notice, which is the schedule of meetings and caucuses of the municipal council for the calendar year 2021, and filed in the office of the city clerk on Wednesday, November 12th, 2020. In addition, at its time of its preparation, the agenda of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Thursday, January 7th, 2021, at 4:00 p.m. to the Municipal Council, Mayor, Business Administrator Corporation Council, and the local newspapers, and posted on the city's website, so I can certify as to our total compliance with the Sunshine Law. Before we move on, I just have a motion to add item 1047, Resolution 21-051. It's a resolution condemning Capitol Hill riots and calling for impeachment of President Donald Trump. May I have a motion to add item 10.47, Resolution 21-051?
Motion.
Motion made by Councilperson Prinzieri. May I have a second?
Second.
Who made the second?
Me, Danny Rivera.
Sorry. I had to look around there. By Councilperson Rivera, on the motion to add item 10.47, Resolution 21-051, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Abstaining.
Councilperson Saleh is not here yet, okay? Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson Lavaro. Councilperson Lavaro.
Oh, sorry, definitely aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
To add item 10.47, Resolution 21-051, motion carries 701. With Councilperson Bajiano abstaining and Councilperson Saleh absent. Before we move on to our regular scheduled meeting, the first reading ordinances, I believe we have a poet on the line to open up the meeting for us. She was at the December 16th meeting, and we didn't have enough time to have her eloquently state a poem for us, so I believe we have her on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, good evening. This is Susan Giustiniano, the poet laureate of Jersey City.
Okay, Susan, you're gonna go whenever you're ready.
Thank you. So I want to thank everyone for allowing me to share this bit of poetry with everyone. I hope it provides some inspiration. People call me a dreamer. Let them see what my dreams bring. A blueprint of the future meant to be nurtured, earth-shaking, far-reaching arrangements that will be built and rebuilt and rebuilt until my last breath. I'll be that dreamer. Split between realities of nighttime freedom and daytime structure. Conjuring, manifesting, creating in my sleep those dreams with the life of accomplishment at their foundation, see themselves into tangible representations, bridges designed to keep building. From them come the strength to maintain what needs to be done, to see fruition of plans and work ready to be completed in its own good time. It doesn't end. It can't. From the dream to the reality, each plan laid in the threads of memories, triggered by premonitions of things to come. Each waking moment an opportunity to create what comes in the form of visions of a mind at peace, from where the undeniable takes root to turn what I believe into the physical. People call me a dreamer. Let them see what my dreams bring. There are those who would speak of their dreams as an unrealistic anomaly. Speaking of them doesn't give them the same life that doing them breeds from them. Dreams need life to be moved in the air of one day to the hands of those who will mold them into seeds for growth, plant them in the eyes of dreamers who do instead of think. Those to whom the rules of impossible don't apply. They call me a dreamer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Susan. Thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to working with everyone on the council. Have a great meeting and have a great evening.
You too. Thank you so much. That was great inspiration for a nice meeting that we're gonna have. Okay, so before we move on, I would just like to mark Councilperson Saleh present at 6:11 p.m. So now we can go to our regular scheduled business. We're moving on to our first reading ordinances, if you allow me to read them into the record. Starting with item 3.1, City Ordinance 21-001, an ordinance amending Chapter 304, taxation to authorize a transfer tax on medical cannabis dispensed by dispensary as authorized by J. Kong Hein, Compassionate Use Medical Cannabis Act, NJSA 24, semicolon, 6i-1, except. Item 3.2, City Ordinance 21-002, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 53, Personnel, 53-11 of the Jersey City Municipal Code. Item 3.3, City Ordinance 21-003, an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations, Section 332-9, Stop Intersections for new multiway stops at various intersections in Ward E. And item 3.4, City Ordinance 21-004, an ordinance adopting amendments to the Water Street redevelopment plan regarding property located at Block 20701, Lots 4 and 5, and Block 20704, Lots 1 and 2. Councilmembers taking a vote on introduction for items 3.1 through 3.4. Councilperson Ridley.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Solomon.
Excuse me, I was just pulling up the agenda. Just wanna make sure I get my numbers right for my vote. All right, there it is. Uh, yes on 3.1, 3.3, and 3.4, and no on 3.2.
No on 3.2. Aye on all the rest. Got it. Councilperson Robinson.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Lavaro.
On 3.1, John, you're still working on my question on estimates for medical marijuana revenue generated and potential tax estimates?
Yes, Councilman, and if you have any additional information, please just share it as far as the data.
I'm sorry, did you say if I have additional information?
Yeah, it seemed as if you were a little bit more sensitive to the existing. Uh, yeah, we could touch base offline, but we'll do the analysis and get back to you on that.
Um, and then on 3.2, did we get the, um, and I haven't checked my email to verify this, but did you send us the parity studies or any sort of parity studies with regard to comparisons on salaries?
Uh, we do have our existing ordinance, and then we have Newark's ordinance that we have it compared to.
You've sent that to us, correct?
I have it, yeah, I have it in PDF. I believe it was incorporated yesterday's. If not, I'll circle back.
Um, so I'm gonna vote aye for introduction on 3.1, 3.3, uh, and then on 3.2, I think it's frankly insane that we're contemplating allowing for salary increases in the middle of a pandemic. This may have been done previously, but it makes absolutely zero sense when everybody else is struggling to make ends meet. We've laid, we literally laid people off citing budgetary concerns. We've, uh, we've introduced a solid waste collection service fee, hitting homeowners, property owners at $300 per household and family on that. And a 9% sewer rate increase as a backdoor tax. It makes absolutely zero sense to be able to somehow justify salary increases for directors, no matter how great their performance might be. That being said, I'm gonna vote no on 3.2. And then on 3.4, there's a lot of open questions for me, but, uh, I do have concerns that this is, that there's applications of the inclusionary zoning. Let me ask to the law department. I've requested legal opinions. Is that still in the works, or was that already furnished?
Uh, Councilman, we had had a chance. We did not prepare a written legal opinion yet. However, we did review this application in light of the inclusionary zoning ordinance, and we do not believe that the inclusionary zoning ordinance applies to this.
Okay, when will an official legal memo citing the, your legal explanation as to why you don't think it's applicable?
As I said, you can expect something next week, but it will certainly be before the final, the caucus for the next meeting.
That's a little, that's a little bit late. I'll say that on that. With all due respect, before the caucuses, the caucus would be two days before the vote, I think. If we can get something a lot sooner than that, we'd appreciate it. That would make all the difference in the world to know exactly what your legal, legal opinion is on that, and so that the council can make an informed decision because to verify whether or not that the legal, that the legal opinion is supported by legal precedents and any other statutory references. So I'm gonna ask that it be furnished by early next week, that being approximately, uh, January 18th, Monday, January 18th.
We're closed, Tuesday, the 19th.
Okay, so Tuesday, the 19th, then. Okay, I vote, but for introduction, I'm gonna vote no for introduction on 3.4.
So you're voting no on 3.2 and 3.4, correct?
Correct.
And aye on all the rest. Got it. Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye for introduction.
Kidding. If I can just recap. Item 3.1 is introduced 9-0. Item 3.2 is introduced 7-2, with Councilmember Solomon and Lavaro voting no. Item 3.3 is introduced 9-0. Item 3.4 is introduced 8-1, with Councilperson Lavaro voting no. Okay. All right, before we move on to the second reading ordinances, ladies and gentlemen of the public, we're gonna be starting our public hearings on our second reading ordinances. If you wish to speak on a second reading ordinance, please provide us with your full name and your telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through the meeting. Please keep in mind, we will not be calling people back, so please stay by your phone. That also includes the next portion of the meeting when we get through of the second readings. We will be moving on to the public hearing portion of the meeting where we have the list of speakers. Please be by your phone, because we will only be calling you once. With that being said, we're gonna move on to our first second reading ordinance, item 4.1, City Ordinance 20-108, an ordinance rescinding, number one, ordinance 12-149, number two, ordinance 12-150, number three, ordinance 12-151, and number four, ordinance 12-152, and terminating the tax exemptions and financial agreements with BR Mercury Urban Renewal Company, LLC, BR Ophium Urban Renewal Company, LLC, BR Paramount Urban Renewal Company, LLC, and BR Tower Urban Renewal Company, LLC. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through the meeting. I believe we have our first speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Yvonne Bolser.
Okay, Yvonne, your time is gonna start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Okay, first of all, Happy New Year to everyone. What I would like to say is that I've read the ordinance, and I'm not against it. Obviously, I'm against all tax abatement. The problem I do have is that when you look at tax abatements in general, they're pretty lengthy in how much money the city's gonna receive and, and how much money is gonna go to affordable housing and how much money is gonna go to county, all of this. But when you take away a tax abatement, that same information should be in here. I like to know how much money is gonna go to the city. I like to know how much money is gonna go to the border bed now and how much they're gonna pay fully to the county. Because this is, it should be mirroring what you wrote in the past, I'm trying to say. So I'm hoping that in the future, when you, you could have more tax abatement, you're letting the public know what is being replaced. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Yvonne. Made a good point. Sean.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Sorry about that. Thank you very much, Council President. This is still a public hearing on City Ordinance 20-108. This, if you're, any member of the public wishing to be heard, if you can please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through the meeting. Okay, this is the last call for the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-108. If any member of the public is still wishing to be heard on this ordinance, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through the meeting. Okay, council members, no one has contacted me anymore through the live event Q and A, so I may have a motion to close the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-108.
Motion.
So that motion was made by Councilperson Prinzieri, and I'll give a second to Councilperson Rivera on the motion to close the public hearing on Ordinance 20-108. Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson Lavaro.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carries 9-0 to close the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-108. I believe we have a motion to table ordinance 20-108 after the close of the public hearing.
Yes.
Who is making that motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Council President Waterman. May I have a second?
Can you put it up on the screen?
This is to close the pub, this is to table the ordinance after the close of the public hearing. So I just need a second on that.
Second.
Second made by Councilperson Rivera on the motion to table ordinance 20-108 after the close of the public hearing. Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson Lavaro.
I'm sorry, maybe I missed it at the caucus, but can someone explain to me why this is being tabled?
Because they in the process of meeting with 32BJ, and we wanna make sure 32BJ is on board with what's going on.
Got it. All right, I'll vote aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Motion to table City Ordinance 20-108 at the close of the public hearing carries 9-0. Is unanimously approved. Okay, on to our next second reading ordinance, which is item 4.2, City Ordinance 20-109, an ordinance establishing the Arts and Culture Trust Fund to create funding sources for the arts organizations in the City of Jersey City. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through the meeting.
Yvonne Bolser.
Okay, we have Yvonne Bolser on the line. Yvonne, your time is gonna start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Okay, in the ordinance, it says that there's gonna be two cents per hundred assessment. Probably in the year 1900, you can buy property for 500 bucks. But property today is in the hundred thousands and even in the millions. I think the city should actually start changing its code and start doing it in, in the thousand. So it's not a two cents per hundred, it's really 20 cents per thousand. And I think, you know, if you're living downtown and paying a million bucks on a, on a house, that's real money. The second thing I wanna bring up, I don't think this tax money should be used to attack religious symbols, no matter what religion it is. It is public money, and I don't wanna see art like we saw in the past of the Virgin Mary with a machine gun. That's totally inappropriate, it really is. And I wanna also remind everyone that we give everyone the right to vote, but according to the rules that you passed the previous, not everyone will pay this. As I said before, rent-controlled properties is based upon the, it's not based on taxes, it's based on the price index, something similar to Social Security. So here's an example of, you're saying, and I realize the public voted for this, but it's the wrong time to do this when people are losing their homes and 5,000 homeowners wanted to tax lien. I wonder if anyone ever thought about those people at all. But I'm just asking you in the future to please do an ordinance to change that per hundred assessment to what really is a per thousand assessment, a hundred thousand assessment. And it should be a thousand assessment. And make sure no money goes to art to attack anyone's religious symbols. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This is still a public hearing on Ordinance 20-109. I believe we have our next speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, my name's Jean Daly.
Okay, Jean, your time is gonna start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Oh, thank you very much. I just took a quick peek at the ordinance itself. And if you look at under 2, Purpose of Levy Allocation of Funds, under item A, it also says that levy should be deposited into an arts and cultural trust fund to be created by the municipality and shall be used exclusively for arts and culture, except that the municipality may deposit such amounts into the current fund of that municipality for uses not related to arts and culture if the director of the Division of Local Government Services in the Department of Community Affairs finds that the municipality is in fiscal distress. What does that mean? Does that mean it's gonna be reversed just like the payroll tax was for the schools? How do they un-certify, what was it, 27, 28, 29 million dollars? I forget the number. But what, what does this mean? This cannot be passed, given this bit of nebulous wording, and truly is an embarrassment. I mean, does anybody know what this is about? Can anyone state anything about it? This is horrifying.
I'll go ahead and jump in and make the Corporation Council if you wanna follow suit. But Jean, I'll do that after your time.
Okay, I think my time's up, and I've said my, my point. Thank you very much.
So, so Jean, just briefly to answer your question, the language in the ordinance mirrors exactly the state legislation. So that clause was put in by the state and passed by the state before it came down to the municipality. And, um, you know, John Metro, if you maybe wanna talk, or Jean, we can actually reach out to you about the fiscal distress component. And I'll have John Metro, if he would be willing to do that, because there are parameters around cities filing for fiscal distress. So hopefully that answers your questions, and we'll get back to you on the other.
Yeah, absolutely, Councilperson. Just, just to briefly touch about it on a public side, you know, the financial distress that they're talking about is, you know, a failure to make debt service payments obligations that would result in a possible bank rupture of the city and, you know, total despair of the city. They put this language in there as a safeguard that they could repurpose or retool all possible resources. And it would only be at their discretion. We have no discretion at a local level. And again, that would only be initiated in severe cases that we have not met, and hopefully never will.
Okay, this is still a public hearing on City Ordinance 20-109. Any member of the public still wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A. please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through the meeting. Okay, this is the last call on the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-109. Any member of the public still wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we'll patch you through the meeting. Okay, council members, no one has contacted me through the live event Q and A, so I may have a motion to close the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-109.
Motion.
Motion made by Councilperson Rivera, seconded by Councilperson Prince Ari. On the motion to close the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-109, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prince Ari.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson LaVarro.
This is to close?
Yes.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero to close the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-109. For final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance 2109, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prince Ari.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
I'm going to say aye, but I think we should look into what Yvonne Bolser said.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson LaVarro.
So I vote aye, and but just as we adopt this ordinance and look towards the next steps around this in terms of how to allocate those monies, I just want to impress on the idea that the process that's established and how the funding is distributed, that'd be apoliticized, de-politicized, removing the politics from the distribution of the dollars to ensure that there's fair and transparent and open access to being for arts organizations throughout the city, from all parts of the city, to be able to access those funds. The second thing is with regard to some of the budgetary issues and concerns, I've expressed this to arts leaders prior to the ballot initiative itself, is that we do have, and this is even prior to COVID. And so COVID has exacerbated things and potentially changed things around that as well. And so we need to kind of look at kind of how to best utilize these dollars in light of that. What I did express pre-COVID was that there was-- we do have a school funding crisis and trying to find some alignment between these dollars and our school funding needs, that I think we should prioritize that as well. That's not to say that's a full dedication of those dollars, any sense of that of the word there, but we should be looking to do greater alignment to ensure that kind of arts organizations and programming and for youth and arts education for youth continues to be funded as well, and that this could potentially be a source in working with arts organizations in alignment with the schools. But I vote aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
I vote aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
City Ordinance 20-109 is approved unanimously, nine zero. On to our next second reading ordinance, item 4.3, City Ordinance 20-110, an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations, amending Sections 332-5, One-Way Streets of the Jersey City Code to convert Baldwin Avenue to One Way Northbound. I believe we have a motion on the--
I motion to table it for further research, as we agreed.
Second.
Councilperson Bajiano is making a motion to table ordinance 20-110, excuse me, 110, prior to the public hearing. And there was a second made, may I have the second? Was that by Councilperson Solomon?
Robinson.
Robinson.
I apologize. So a motion to table City Ordinance 20-110 prior to the public hearing made by Councilperson Bajiano, seconded by Councilperson Robinson. On the motion to table City Ordinance 20-110 prior to the close of the public, prior to the public hearing, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prince Ari.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
If I could just very briefly-- I'm going to vote no, and then just three things I just want to briefly say. The first is, I think a number of people did sign up, and just general practice generally good for us to listen to them. When they come here, out of respect. Second thing is when the mayor spoke at the council caucus, there were two things he said that I took issue with. The first was, he said there was no data on this, and I don't believe that's true. I believe the traffic and engineering team and the administration wouldn't have been on the agenda if the Baldwin Avenue piece hadn't been studied. I believe Summit Avenue has not been studied yet. And I understand and respect the councilman's wishes for a delay, because it's important to do outreach and to do more study, but not a delay without a timeline. And without a timeline, given the unsafe conditions that have led to fatalities on Baldwin Avenue, I can't approve of an indeterminate delay. Respect, again, the need for more outreach, but not if there's a timeline on it. So with that, I vote no.
Councilperson Robinson.
I vote aye.
Councilperson LaVarro.
So this is going to seem ironic and kind of the-- how these things have twisted and turned in these matters, but I am going to also vote no on tabling without public hearing. And to be clear and for the record, I mean, I'm okay with the tabling, as Councilman Solomon noted, but without putting a timeline on it and a deadline, I think that's part of the ruse here, frankly, I'll tell you. For all parties, whatever position inside you're on, I think it's part of the ruse that's going on here. But let me say this. So I do think important to do the outreach. I've said that before, going back to the kind of the Bergen Avenue. Frankly, I mentioned it at the public meeting that was organized by myself, Councilperson Bajiano and Councilperson Prince Ari, that we had a meeting at Hudson Catholic around the Bergen Avenue bike lanes. I had suggested then that looking at kind of a study around Bergen and Summit and looking at bike lanes there and having one-way directional traffic, and had we looked at those kind of things. And now we're looking at Baldwin, and now we're expanding, suggesting that they're going to look at Summit. It was suggested back then that there may be, maybe there'd be a study, and maybe there would be, that they thought that was kind of a good idea at the time, but that there was a rush to kind of get some things done. It was implied at the meeting, and that there was a need to go and get Bergen Avenue done. I think if you were to look at that and then look at it more comprehensively, if this is, I did have conversations, and I thank traffic engineer and planning personnel for bringing me up to speed on this, as to what kind of work has been done. There have been, as Councilman Solomon has said, some preliminary studies done, particularly on the Baldwin Avenue side. There are other potential studies that need to be done, and how comprehensive that study will be, as I've pointed out in the past. There was a study done in the Western Slope that was done for three streets up there with regard to Liberty Avenue, Columbia Avenue, and Terrace Avenue, I believe it was. And looking at similar types of changing the streets to different one-way directional, but that was eventually aborted as a proposal after doing the studies and having different, identifying different proposals and alternatives, and presenting those proposals on alternatives to the council and to the public at large. I think we're going down the same track and doing the same process here. It would be good to have a timetable on the process to bring closure and to bring resolution to that. It was suggested by the mayor that this ordinance in and of itself is an effort to try to get the kind of the temperature of the council and essentially see if the city council was on board with kind of studying this and so forth. That in fact is not, just to be clear for the public, this ordinance is not about having a study or getting something done to do a study. That's just a, that is, has been suggested by the councilman, who represents the area, that in fact has been the deal, right? The deal has been cut, right? And so it's a political deal. Let's be clear about that, too. No disrespect intended, Rich, but--
What are you talking about, Yvonne? You're way off base.
I'm not off base, this is exactly 100% on base.
You're off base.
But I'm going to have my time now to speak. So this is a political deal that has been cut to say, let's study this now. But what it was originally put on and intended to do was to-- it's clear and plain as day, it's written in the ordinance, that it's going to be looking to change it to a one-way directional northbound lane for Baldwin Avenue and a two-way bike lane. It's not written to say, let's do a study on this, as I suggested at caucus. What could have been done was to actually put a resolution in front of the city council and saying, what do you think about doing a study on this? And do you support the idea of conducting a study and so forth? And the council could have voted on that, and I would have voted yes on that as well. And so while I'm voting no, that's not to suggest on the tabling, it's the no on the tabling without public hearing, because I do want to have a public hearing, and I do want to have that in public input. It's important, I think, to hear from these voices. And also, I just want those folks to know as well, as I finish my remarks here, is that this is the kind of game that's played here in Jersey City and at this council dais. You know, somebody said to me that it's very important, and I think that process matters, right? That process matters in order to ensure that public input is heard and things of that nature, but that there's transparency and that there's responsibility and openness around this, that people can see what's going on here. And that we have open communication around these whole matters. And in fact, instead, what we don't have is any of that, right? We have people, whatever side of the fence you're on in this, you're just a pawn in the game of Mayor Phillips' game, that he plays on these things. And it's not the first time this has happened. This council knows it. Some of the council members have been down this road before, and I've been down it as well, whether it was the Katine Memorial Statue, where like, and Councilperson Bajiano ended up on the right side of that one, right? So sometimes you end up on the right side, sometimes you end up on the wrong side. I was on the wrong side, but I objected to the process, and I did a lot of objection on that one. We looked at the pedestrian plaza and how that was implemented prior to the actual ordinance being introduced to the city council, and the city council had to like, figure out how to negotiate changes while in fact it was already being implemented. Everybody knows it on this council. They know that they've gone through this. And this is just another thing like that. And I would say to folks on both sides of the aisle on this issue, whether you're an avid bike activist, like, at the end of the day, whatever your position, all of this can be addressed, and we can all have a meeting of the minds and cooperation around these matters, wherever folks are at. But don't allow yourselves to be played as a pawn in the game, right? In the Mayor Phillips game, that he plays constantly throughout this. So that's the largest reason why I'm voting no, because we should have a public hearing, and we shouldn't be allowed to be played as pawns in Phillips' political games. I vote no.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
I'm a vote aye, but one thing I do want to say concerning the council here, what we have to be is very careful on how we make accusations with what's truth and what's false. It's because we're living in a climate where people are very angry, and we don't know how they will respond. Now, until we have facts with certain things, just assumptions, we should be careful how we say, because people feel a certain way. Now, going forth in this council, if you have facts, then prove the facts. If it's just something that you feel, then I would ask you to be very careful with making a statement, because people are listening, and they may take it the wrong way. We are, we should set an example. We know what happened in Washington. People say things that's not true, and other people feel a certain way. Don't think this can't happen on this council like that. Just don't think that. Now, they said they're going to have a public meeting, and we believe that. We all are courteous with one another when it comes to public meeting. We're not saying the public cannot speak. We're not saying that. Normally, what sometime we do, and that's why I said I watch this, when it's our ordinance, we all favor for, when it's not, we play these games. But I have seen it on this council, and it is true. We have tabled things before the public speaking. And the reason why we have done that is because we are having community meetings. And once the community meets, we bring the ordinance back, and at that time, the audience can have their public say. We're not getting rid of the public speaking at all. We're just trying to hold it until we have public speaking, until we have a public meeting with the public. That is it. So that's why I said, let the public know exactly process. We talk about process, but let them know, we can do this, and we have done this. This is a hot climate now. Don't put it out there like we just getting rid of the public portion. No, it will come back. Once they have the public meetings, it will come back. So let's make sure we don't put out this negative air like this. If you got, if whoever got a problem with the mayor, deal with the mayor with this. I'm tired of us bringing all this stuff here about the mayor. Deal with the mayor on the issues that you have with him. We are all colleagues, we've got to work together. And what's so sad about it, we say we're all Democrats, and we fighting each other, going back and forth. Enough of this. Let's just do what we supposed to do for the public. We all have an objective here. We all want to help the public. We may have a different way of doing it, but our whole objective really is to help the public. So let's not battering with one another. Let's just move forward with this. This is enough of this. Deal with the mayor on his time, not ours.
Okay, motion--
Go ahead, Sean.
No problem. Motion carries seven-two with council members Solomon and LaVarro voting no. Okay, on to our next second reading ordinance, item 4.4, City Ordinance 20-111, an ordinance amending Chapter 321 Trees of the Municipal Code of the City of Jersey City. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through the meeting. And before we move on, any member of the public who listed their name to speak during the public hearing portion of the meeting, which is number five on the agenda, please stay by your phones. You'll be called in the order that you listed. We listed you on the agenda, so we will be calling you at that time, and you can speak for three minutes. With that being said, this is still a public hearing on Ordinance 20-111. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through the meeting. I believe we're trying to get our first speaker on the phone. Just bear with us, council members. I believe we have our next speaker on the phone. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Adam Cohen.
Okay, Adam, your time will start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
I just wanted to express my support for the changes that are being made to Chapter 321, the Municipal Code. As the council designee on the Shade Tree Committee, I can attest to the fact that members of the Shade Tree Committee worked very hard on these revisions. I understand that they are not the revisions that everybody, every stakeholder may have wanted, but they are the revisions that I think were able to be accommodated within the confines of New Jersey state law. And I would hope that we continue to make revisions to other parts of governing documents for the city, and I know that that is the intent, that govern trees. I would also urge the council to very, very seriously consider its funding priorities for trees, as stated in this ordinance. Street trees provide many, many benefits to the city, and the lack of trees in our city, which is really reaching a very dire level, really needs to be addressed as soon as possible. Street trees, and trees in general, provide shade, which helps lower temperatures on our streets, which in turn means that people are using less electricity to cool their homes in the summer. So you're saving your residents money. You are reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and you're providing a monetary benefit, because it's been proven that trees on streets tend to increase property-- to increase property values. So I would strongly, strongly urge the council to consider providing a lot more money for trees. I know the mayor is very proud of having planted upwards of 500 trees this year. What isn't mentioned is that over 100 trees were also lost this year. So we are really making baby steps in tackling this issue. It's also an environmental justice issue, because if you look at the neighborhoods that are most severely impacted by a lack of tree canopy, it tends to be neighborhoods in Jersey City where there are lower-income residents and higher concentrations of people of color. So strongly in support of these revisions to Chapter 321, and I would urge, once again, that the council consider its funding priorities for the coming year, and really, you know, double, triple, quadruple the funding that we are giving to forestry. So I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. This is still a public hearing on City Ordinance 20-111. I believe we have our next speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Would that be Deborah Taliano?
Okay, Deborah, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Thank you. Good evening, folks, and wishing you all a healthy new year. Deborah Taliano, president of Sustainable Jersey City, where the community green team in town launched back in 2011. Fast forward today, we have a seat on the Shade Tree Committee. Our roots, no pun intended, run pretty deep regarding trees and green infrastructure. It's been something that we've been working on for the last 10, 11 years since we launched. So one of the things that the gentleman who was just speaking, I didn't hear who that was, pointed to is that all the stakeholders potentially aren't that on board with what I'm going to say, and this is no disrespectful remark, because I think that we're just doing a great job. And certainly John McKinney, who was the attorney that was guiding the yeses and the nos, and we can do this, and we can't do that, based on New Jersey state law. We had spent 18 months putting together a package of proposed amendments, starting with the sponsorship of Michael Yun's office after the Society Hill Trees came down. It was our first foray in trying to put together something that would look like legislative change. So what's occurred is that 90% of what we had proposed, which were based on best practices, model ordinances from around the state, so it doesn't wash in our view that these things can't be implemented here based on New Jersey state law. Again, what we were trying to do is cover off on some big bucket items, protecting trees from being removed, and also, given that the nature of the ordinance is supposed to focus on existing trees and making sure that they thrive, we included a maintenance section, was one example, that was completely rejected. So one of the things that showed up at Society Hill was that there were two loopholes, maintenance being one of the loopholes, which is governed by New Jersey state law in the case of Society Hill, but seems that there are special purpose entities, like the development entity at Society Hill, that are in charge of maintenance for public walkways, all public access, whether it's a walkway, or a plaza, or a pocket park, that are given as a development project is completed, the responsibility, naming the city as an additional insured, to maintain and protect those trees. In the case of Society Hill, unfortunately, the mayor decided not to intervene, but by state law, and this is something that should be investigated and should be included in our ordinance. Those special purpose entities are governed by state open space law, and the city had the authority to intervene, but chose not to do that. There are many of these special purpose entities all over the city around these developments. The other thing I'd like to point out is that there's another New Jersey state law.
Deborah, your time is up.
So, and just a quick question, perhaps, time used to be five minutes. When was it brought down to three minutes?
That was done probably near the end of 2019. I believe the city council.
Okay, so I missed a year.
Say again.
Okay, so in closing, what I just want to say is that there's New Jersey state law that has bearing on what isn't in the ordinance.
The time is up, Deborah.
And I think it should be tabled.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we believe we have our next speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
This is Catherine Moore.
Okay, Catherine, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Yes, I live in downtown, and I'm kind of new to understanding the city trees and shade trees and the forestry standards. And I kind of feel like the, the ordinance, the purpose of it just seems a little vague as far as like, you know, for maintenance, and you know, why certain things are not included that would be beneficial for the city to, to know, like, how to take care of existing trees. You know, I live in a neighborhood that has a lot of parking lots. I'm down in the powerhouse district, and we have a lot of trees that are dead and no plans to replace them. So it just kind of seems like you just kind of wonder, like, how do you know, you know, what kind of maintenance is supposed to happen to these trees? And it just kind of doesn't make things look very good when, you know, just tree after tree after tree just continues to die and isn't replaced. So I think having a little bit more information and more complete information about maintenance of the trees would be beneficial to be in this part, and, you know, instead of having to refer back to Jersey City Forest Standards, which is a huge document, when you're just trying to figure out, you know, you know, how do you save the trees or replace the trees that are, are not there, or like, what kind of care needs to be given to the trees? And it probably should be more than two years. Two years seems like a short time that you have to maintain a tree. So just having that kind of information, how long does someone, you know, has to maintain that tree, and to make sure it's good? And that's it.
Thank you very much. This is still a public hearing on this ordinance. I believe we have our next speaker on the line, but before we do that, we just want to make sure that we're hanging up the phone after we're done speaking, so we can move on to the next speaker. I believe our next speaker is on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, this is Denise Bailey.
Okay, Denise, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Okay, yes, I'm a Shade Tree Committee member, as well as a Society Hill resident for almost 20 years, and a founding member of the Friends of the Walkway. In coordination with a number of community groups, Friends of the Walkway, Sustainable Jersey City, the Pars Coalition, the Central Avenue Improvement District, we've reviewed the ordinance for over 18 months, six of those months being with Councilman Yun. We've recognized that there are major loopholes in the ordinance, two being, the major ones being that trees are removed for sidewalk improvements, and that's such a vague and open term that many developers in particular can, can work around and remove trees for no real reasons other than these supposed sidewalk improvements, which really does impact our tree canopy. Another large loophole is tree maintenance, the lack of tree maintenance accountability for special purpose entities. The community groups that participated in the review of these, the ordinance, presented that information to the Shade Tree Commission and asked for that to be considered. 90% of that information was rebuffed and deferred to the forestry standards. The difference with the forestry standards is that the forestry standards are guidelines. The, an ordinance is one that allows for enforcement and protection, and actually highlights information that is most pertinent and important for the citizens to, to adhere to. You know, this, we're really, you know, this is a concerted effort to push this ordinance through. The two things should be connected, the ordinance and the forestry standards, since one is supposedly connected to the other. So they should both be reviewed and voted on simultaneously, but this concerted effort to push through the ordinance individually is really going to be a pathway to the repeat of the destruction of 84 mature trees that were brought down for no real reason other than supposed sidewalk improvements. The maintenance section that needs to be included in the ordinance for the special purpose entities that are, again, around the city, that's not just to Society Hill, and the purpose, the special purpose entities are for city-owned areas that are then maintained supposedly by individual organizations like associations. My ask here for you tonight is to hold and table this ordinance, and have the, both of these documents, the ordinance and the forestry standards reviewed together.
Thank you, Denise. Okay, this is.
Thank you.
Public hearing on this ordinance. I believe we have our next speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Caroline Catzmat.
Okay, Caroline, your time will start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Hello, good evening. My name is Caroline. I'm vice president of the Pershing Fields Neighborhood Association of the Heights. Like the people who spoke before me, and I'm sure most of you and most Jersey City residents, a major concern that we have is the death of trees and the loss of trees that has occurred over the past decade, especially the old growth trees, especially in this era of climate change. Actually, the first time that I spoke before a city council meeting was in 2001, and it was around an ordinance that was pending, and the ordinance was very strong in terms of its provisions on protecting trees from removal. It had been passed in response to community outrage at what one might call a massacre that had recently occurred on Summit Avenue in March of 2001, in which many old growth trees were lost in order to put in a new, not terribly distinguished, but a new sidewalk. And that, that, and that like motivated many of us to work with the, with that current administration, and what resulted was an ordinance that was very strong in terms of protecting trees. However, unfortunately, the ordinance was not enforced in a strong manner, which I think does happen too frequently with cer, with certain laws in Jersey City. So that became, and we tried over the years to keep it enforced, and then in 2017, another ordinance was passed, and now you have a new one in front of you. Actually, as the speaker before, I think it was maybe Denise, I missed part of that, there is, there was concern that we had, and we were coming to urge you to reject the ordinance originally, because we did not feel that the provisions were strong enough, particularly on the issue of removal of trees, and we were concerned that there could be, that there were potential loopholes. However, we have been working with the committee on strengthening the forestry standards, and it's our understanding that those standards will indeed be the method of enforcement of our tree policy. If they do not meet our expectations, then we will be back to you to ask you to reject the resolution that the forestry standards get voted on through the resolution. But at this point, we feel that the forestry standards that we are negotiating on will offer.
Thank you so much, Caroline.
To our trees.
Thank you, Carol.
I didn't say everything I wanted. Can I add one thing?
Sorry, your time is up, Caroline.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, this is still a public hearing on City Ordinance 20-111. I believe we have our next speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Jean Daly.
Okay, Jean, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Thank you very much. I'm not part of Society Hill, nor any really organization, but having grown up in a rural area and in the woods, quite frankly, the presence of trees is extremely important, not only for the health of us, the environment, in preventing asthma pollutants, absorbing pollutants, hosting wildlife, which is why I don't like the Ginkgo trees, because they don't support any wildlife. This is a very, very important topic to me. The issue that I have with this city is that they do not enforce their regulations. Just, you know, two years ago, or a year and a half ago, I had taken photos, you know, of girls that were placed around a tree on a new development, numbers of them in a line. And I sent them to Mr. Platt, or former Mr. Platt, who said he would, he would look into this, and, and completely said that, oh, no, this, these were put in, you know, after the regulation, or before, rather, the regulation was, the tree regulations were in effect. And I wrote him back, no, they weren't, and showed him the dates of the photos and when this happened. Yet those tree girls still remain there, and the issue is this city does nothing. It does nothing to enforce, which is what the prior speaker had spoken, had mentioned. The enforcement is useless. You can write everything you want down on paper, but unless you enforce it, what's the point? I mean, I see the city planting trees the wrong time of the year, failing to put the, those water things around it, failing to fill them, not knowing how to plant a root ball. I mean, I guess if you grow up in a rural area, you learn these things naturally, but you can look it up online, you can take online lessons, et cetera. It's not rocket science. It's very easy. And the trees that I see this city plant are often done incorrectly, and therefore they're destined to die. Know what that is? It's called a waste of money. You are paying workers, first of all, you're buying the trees, you're transporting the trees to Jersey City, you're paying the workers to put them in, and they eventually die. So I guess you have an ever, you know, revolving workforce to do the same failed experiment over and over and over again. What I'm trying to say is the city needs to enforce its own regulation. And as they were saying, Society Hill, yes, there are rubberized types of pavement, pavement, sidewalk substitute that can be used to go over the roots and mounds, et cetera, to create a smoother surface. And that destroying old growth trees is a, is a real horror. You're talking about something that takes 60, 70, you know, 80 years to develop, and you hack it down in one shot. That's really shameful, and the city needs to do something about it. Thank you.
Very much. This is still a public hearing on City Ordinance 20-111. Any member of the public still wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through Okay, this is the last call for the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-111. Any member of the public still wishing to be heard on this ordinance, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will Okay, council members, no one else has contacted me through the live event Q and A. May I have a motion to close the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-111? Motion. Motion made by Councilperson Rivera. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilperson Prinderry. Second by Councilperson Prinzieri. On the motion to close the public hearing on City Ordinance twenty-one-one-one, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Solei.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson LaVarro.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carries nine-zero to close the public hearing on City Ordinance twenty-one-one-one. Council members, I need a motion to amend City Ordinance twenty-one-one-one. It's a very minor amendment to the attachments. Amanda, if you could bring up the ordinance, so we can point out where the amendment is going to be. We're going to scroll down to the attachments, and when you get to three-twenty-one-six, should be the very last page of the attachment, right? There you go. And then in D, where it's underlined in bold, the very last sentence in D where it says, well, it's actually the whole sentence, "Nothing in this section shall be construed to limit the power of the division to move or require the removal of any tree or part thereof for any purpose consistent with Section three-twenty-one-one." And this is where the amendment's going to be, to add this language, and the Jersey City Forestry Standards. That's the minor change that we're having. Just so we're all on the record, Corporation Council, can you please let us know that this is not a substantial change to the ordinance?
Yeah, I can confirm that is not a substantial change, would require a new first reading.
I appreciate it Nick, thank you so much. So on that
May I, may I, may I just ask, I'm sorry Sean, Council President, can Corporation Council just explain why that's not a substantial change? Just, just saying so, saying it so.
No, it, it, it's just one line that has, there's no, no substantial bearing on the purpose and the intent of the ordinance. So just, all you're adding is, and the Jersey City Forestry Standards. That's the only line you're adding, and consistent with the other pieces of, of the ordinance. So would not represent a substantial change, would require a new second reading.
I mean, the number of words isn't, isn't the, isn't the measure for whether it's substantial or not, right? So, I mean, I haven't reviewed the Jersey City Forestry Standards in that regard, but I mean, is that, is that significant impact on whatever that line was that we were just looking at? I don't have it in front of me, but you're saying it's not?
It is not, is not represent a significant change to the ordinance, would require a new second reading.
All right. So may I have a motion to amend City Ordinance twenty-one-one-one, to add the language in Section three-twenty-one-six-D and the Jersey City Forestry Standards? May I have a moment? Motion made by Councilperson Rivera. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilperson Solei. On the motion to amend City Ordinance twenty-one-one-one, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Solei.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson LaVarro.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carries nine-zero to amend City Ordinance twenty-one-one-one-one-one, to add the language in Section three-twenty-one-six-D, the words, and the Jersey City Forestry Standards. For final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance twenty-one-one-one as amended, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
I just want to take a moment to thank all of the members of the Shade Tree Committee for all the work that they've done on the revisions for Chapter three-twenty-one, and I want to thank some of the groups that had worked previously with Michael Young's office, a former councilman, for the work that you've done on that as well. I think that we've done a really great step in tightening up some of the issues within the ordinance, as well as increasing one of the fee components. And just sort of for clarification, as the forestry standards are mentioned explicitly throughout the entirety of the ordinance, that does become, you know, the, that does become the law. And I think it's also really important to know that this process was done with the Shade Tree Committee, but also with our Jersey City Forester, with our planning department, and with our legal team. So the changes that some of the members had originally thought could go in three-twenty-one are actually better suited for the forestry standards. That's where you can really get into the very specifics of planting, of maintenance, and of replacement. And we have already started working on amending the forestry standards as they currently stand. The ordinance also is also in best practice with what other municipalities are doing, which is codify general information about trees and shade trees, and then moving specificity into forestry standard manuals. So you all can look forward to those amendments on a future council meeting, and with that, I vote aye.
Thank you, Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Solei.
Just want to say I love trees, and I had a few reservations that I brought to Councilwoman Mira Prinzieri, and basically I wanted to bring more trees, and how to do that, and how to protect the trees, and basically, the forestry standards, that's where all of that will go into, and this establishes the framework for, you know, just the bedrock, and then we could get into the nitty-gritty later. But thank you to the Shade Tree Committee for all their hard work, and everyone that was on the committee that brought this to life. Thank you.
And your vote? Councilperson Solei, your vote?
Oh, aye, sorry.
Thank you. Councilperson Solomon.
I, I too love trees, and I too vote aye.
Thank you. Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson LaVarro.
I'll vote aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
City Ordinance twenty-one-one-one, as amended, is approved nine-zero unanimously. Okay, on to our next second reading ordinance. Item four-point-five, City Ordinance twenty-one-two, was an ordinance of the Jersey City Municipal Council, adopting amendments to the Land Development Ordinance, Chapter three-forty-five, Article three, Section seventeen, Traffic Impact Analysis, and Section eighteen, Visual Impact Analysis. This is a public hearing. On this ordinance, any member of the public wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number in the live event Q and A, and we will patch you Okay, this is the last call on the public hearing for City Ordinance twenty-one-two. This is still a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through the We have someone that wants to be called. If we can get them on the line, we'll patch them through the meeting. Just bear with us, council members and members of the public, we're trying to get the caller on the line. Okay, I believe we have our next speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Jean Daly.
Okay Jean, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Yes, I'll, I'll be very brief. I have had issues trying to get, with filing open requests, trying to get copies of traffic studies, and have been denied. And I'd like to know why this is happening. The traffic study is part of something that the city is voting on, or going to approve or not approve. Why are we citizens not permitted to see these traffic studies? Twice I've been denied these results, saying that they're inter-agency. Maybe Mr. Solomon can help me with, because I had requested traffic studies regarding Exchange Place Plaza, and I was denied that traffic study. So we have to have some definition of what this traffic study, all these traffic studies mean, and why the members of the public are not permitted to see them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is still a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number, and we will patch you through the meeting. I believe we have one more speaker that will be patching through. Okay, we're just trying to get the next speaker patched through. I believe we have our next speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself with the record, please.
Good evening, this is Adam Cohen again.
Okay Adam, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
I did just want to voice my support for some of the changes that are being proposed, largely because it codifies in City Ordinance the importance of our bike network, and the importance of providing bike lanes. So really just wanted to speak in favor of that, and recognizing that bike lanes are an essential part of our transportation network, not just kind of a, in addition, that's, you know, something that random people want. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. This is still a public hearing on City Ordinance twenty-one-two. If any member of the public is wishing to be heard on this ordinance, please, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and Okay, this is the last call on the public hearing for City Ordinance twenty-one-two. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through the Okay, council members, no one has contacted me anymore through the live event Q and A, so I have, may I have a motion to close the public hearing on City Ordinance twenty-one-two?
Motion.
Motion made by Councilperson Rivera. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilperson Prinzieri. On the motion to close the public hearing on City Ordinance twenty-one-two, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Solei.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson LaVarro.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carries nine-zero to close the public hearing on City Ordinance twenty-one-two. For final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance twenty-one-two, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Solei.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Just want to thank City Planning, this is a very sensible set of, of changes that will make us smarter about how we plan and develop and think about bikes and pedestrians and the full range of traffic impacts with each new development, and we have a great planning team. Thank you guys. That I vote aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson LaVarro.
Yeah, I just want to take this time, I didn't want to use it in the, the last thing, in the last ordinance, to talk about the trees, and divert from there, but just to address the remarks about kind of being inflammatory, or trying to, to compare my remarks to the, the terroristic and crazy folks out of DC is, is completely apples and oranges, and completely off-base, completely one-hundred percent off-base. Let me say this, that the facts matter, absolutely, the truth matters, and I presented facts, right? So there's an ordinance that literally, the ordinance is literally not about building consensus, it's not about getting council input. The, the ordinance for around the bike lanes, and changing circulations, and other things related to the Vision Zero Plan, none of it is around, has not been around that up till now. But the, the truth is that the politics have changed, and folks, folks who pay attention to this know what's, what's going on, right? They recognize that the politics are changing, and so in midstream, kind of changing the approach on that stuff to, to try to accommodate the politics for the 2021 election. I'm going to say it straight, folks can try to dismiss it, and try to act as though it's a, if anyone has got Trumpian inclinations, it's the guy who loves to tweet and, and use the Twitter tool as a tool for instigation, pitting communities against each other in Jersey City. That's not been me at all, and I hope other folks recognize that and see that, again, no matter which side of the fence you're on, whether it's on the Baldwin Avenue bike, bike lanes issues, and things of that nature, that, that we're all just kind of being used as pawns in these games, and process matters here. And so I'm going to vote aye for this, and just wanted to make sure that folks understood and clarified my statements on that. Thanks.
Okay, Councilperson Rivera.
EDP. I vote aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
City Ordinance twenty-one-two is approved, adopted unanimously nine-zero. On to our last second reading ordinance, item four-point-six, City Ordinance twenty-one-four, an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City, adopting amendments to the Exchange Place North redevelopment plan regarding the addition of research slash testing laboratory uses. This is a public hearing. On this ordinance, any member of the public wishing to be heard, please contact me through the live event Q and A, and provide me with your full name and telephone number, and Okay, this is the last call on the public hearing for City Ordinance twenty-one-four. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through the meeting.[1780.91] Okay, we have one speaker that wishes to be called, and we will patch that person through the meeting. Just bear with us. Okay, we're just trying to get the speaker on the call, on the line. Bear with us. Okay, I believe we have the speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself with the record, please.
Yes, my name is Jean Daly.
Okay, Jean, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Thank you very much. I just, you know, happened to go over that ordinance just quickly, and the one concern, it doesn't seem to say what type of scientific things will be studied or laboratories, research testing. The reason I ask that is because Jersey City has been a repository for industrial waste for God knows how long. I would think that we should find out what we're approving, what type of product testing. Is it going to be on animal testing? Is it going to be with stem cells? I mean, there are a lot of different types of conflicts that people have with certain types of testing, and just granting this overall thing, overarching thing, rather, without any restrictions, to me, is basically, you know, really just pure negligence. I'm not saying that anything like this would happen, but, I mean, who knows? I mean, maybe they're going to have marijuana, whatever. I mean, I don't really care about that. But the point being is, we really should place limitations on what we want the studies to be about. I'm sure there are people who would find some of it objectionable, perhaps not, but it's just something I'm concerned about, specifically the waste and where it will go, and, you know, if in fact, if there are any chemical waste, will be just dumped in the garbage, will be regular garbage, medical waste with medical pickups, just such like that. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you so much. This is still a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public still wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through the meeting. Okay, this is the last call on the public hearing for City Ordinance 20-114. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through the meeting. Okay, this is the last call on the public hearing for City Ordinance 20-114. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through the meeting. Okay, I think we have a speaker on the line. If you can just move away from your computer, or just turn down the sound on your computer, or move away where the phone is, because we're getting feedback, you can identify yourself with the record, please.
Okay. I'm sorry, can you hear me now, Sean?
Yes.
Let me walk away. So, this is Chuck Harrington.
Okay, Chuck. Chuck, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Okay, thank you. I'm just calling to put the council on notice that if they had any questions, I was available to answer any. This is really my first time on this visual or virtual with the council. Just as a background, this is the same amendments, the same use that the council approved for the Colgate Redevelopment Plan. It's a life science use that they're proposing, hopefully in the, you know, Harborside area. And, you know, we see it as a use that will be obviously needed in today's changing world. It's also a use that you can't do at home, so we're hoping that this will help occupy office space in office buildings. So, that's really long and short of it. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Chuck, this is Councilman Solomon. To answer, I think, Jean's question, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a clause in there that says, "Research testing laboratories shall not include medical facilities which require the disposal of medical waste." Is that right?
That's correct. Yep.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Harrington? Okay, thanks, Chuck. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, this is still a public hearing on City Ordinance 20-114. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through the meeting. Okay, this is the last call for the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-114. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number, and we will patch you through the meeting through the live event Q and A. Appreciate it. Okay, no one else has contacted me through the live event Q and A. May I have a motion to close the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-114?
Motion.
Motion made by Councilperson Prinzieri, seconded by Councilperson Rivera. On the motion to close the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-114, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson LeVarro.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero to close the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-114. For final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance 20-114, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson LeVarro.
And before I cast my vote, I'm just going to want to address the last round, and directly to Councilman Rivera, I heard you blurt out at the end there, right before you cast your vote, EDP. For folks who don't know what that means, that's emotionally distressed person. I'm going to guess you're going to suggest that that wasn't directed at me after I made my remarks, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to accept that denial, I'm sure. I'm certain that those kind of childish kind of comments and insults, the kind of thing that the Council President just spoke to directly in terms of kind of the personal insults and so forth, you know, First Lady Michelle Obama said, "When they go low, we go high." I'm not nearly as classy as her. I'll just say this then, in my remarks about that, knowing that you directed that remark at me, I'm going to say, I kind of wear it with a badge of honor, knowing it's coming from you, and it's coming from a vacuous rubber stamp. So, I vote aye.
Council.
I vote aye.
Council President Waterman.
Aye.
City Ordinance 20-114 is adopted unanimously nine zero. Okay, moving on to our next portion of the meeting, which is the Special Improvement District Assessment Public Hearing on the 2021 Jackson Hill Main Street Special Improvement District Assessment Role and Budget. This is a public hearing on the assessment role and budget of this SID. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please provide me, oh, excuse me, provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through the meeting. Okay, I believe we have our first speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself with the record, please. Fatima.
Fatima Muzba.
Can you spell your last name?
Sure. M as Mary, I, S as in Sam, B as in boy, A H.
A H.
Yes, sir.
Okay, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Okay. This accessible, I cannot continue paying because I'm a widow, and I have only my income that's building, and that building has a lot of empty apartment right now, and people doesn't pay rent, and I have a lot of responsibility to take care of the building, and I'm paying private mortgage with my cousin helping me. I was going to lose that building. He helped me pay the mortgage, and I pay him monthly, so it's hard for me every year. I struggle to pay this about $900, because all my income depend on that building, and now I have been for a year, big, big damage. Especially, it's a hit crime. So, I don't know what to do. All I'm depending on, a year now under social security payment, that's little help for me, but still, I cannot cover my expenses, and you, every year, you asking me for more, and I have a lot of expenses to pay, and I don't want to lose my bank. It's the only income I have in my life for me and my artistic son.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
This is still a public hearing on the Special Improvement District of the Jackson Hill Main Street Improvement District 2021 Assessment Role and Budget. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we will patch you through the meeting. Okay, this is the last call for the public hearing on the 2021 Jackson Hill Main Street Special Improvement District Assessment Role and Budget. Any member of the public still wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number, and we will patch you through the meeting. Do that by.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Did we reach out to the director at the Jackson Hill? I know last meeting, okay. All right, just making sure.
Yep, had a conversation with her.
Okay.
And just for the record, we, you know, in the past, we've never notified the members. They, you know, they follow the agenda, and they do, we send out the letters, we advertise in the Jersey Journal. We actually advertised in the Jersey Journal on December 28th. That's the same day the letters went out to all of the affected property owners. But I'm going to make it one of my, going forward, I'm going to actually contact each director of the SID and let them know that their budget and assessment role is being placed on the agenda going forward. Okay, I think we have our next speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself with the record, please.
Michelle Mathi, Jackson Hill, SID ED.
Go. All right, Michelle, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Well, good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year, despite current events. This is different for me. I'm a Zoom girl, so I'm not accustomed to such things, but I was able to hear the first speaker, and I just wanted to assure you all that, based on the property ownership list that we receive from the, from Toulouse's office, that we do mailings out to all of the property owners. I always afford them opportunity to come and discuss the budget. There is an annual meeting for the budget, which is reviewed and discussed again. And unfortunately, I, that particular person is unfamiliar to me. I wanted to be made very clear that the Jackson Hill office is more than accessible, and participation in the meetings is very important. But that aside, you know, I hope she reaches out to the Jackson Hill office, which is located currently at 99 Monticello Avenue. The number is 201-984-0560. I just want to thank you guys, as usual, for your support of Jackson Hill, and, you know, we keep fighting the good fight, and there are a lot of improvements. There's a lot of development projects coming down the pike. Of course, our office is in communique with the majority of them and working with them, and I just want to say thank you. Again, I avail myself to all property owners who reach out to us. I try to work with them and assist them however I can, and if you know me, you know for me to be telling the absolute truth there. And I hope that their previous property owner is listening and does in fact reach out, and that just drives home the point of the needed assistance for property owners, not just in Jackson Hill, but throughout the city with regard to COVID and efforts to aid them. So, I hope her cries were taken to heart, as well as the many others that are not on this call or listening to this meeting tonight. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Yes, please. This is Fatima Muzba again. The problem I have with artistic son, he doesn't drive.
No, that's, that's a resident. They can't go back and forth and question one another.
No, no.
She can make an appointment with Michelle.
I just want, it's not easy for me to stop and go out and leave this son alone.
It's not going to, she can make an appointment with Michelle.
Can you email us?
That's something that they should discuss privately, really, on the air.
Fatima, can you email ysalej@jcnj.org?
I'm sorry, who are you speaking with?
Oh, the property owner that was talking about her autistic son.
Yes.
If she could.
Again, my number is, my number is 201-984-0560. Call me tomorrow, and we can discuss your situation.
Okay. Fatima, you got that? Okay.
And of course, all my contact information is on every correspondence that we mail out. out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is still a public hearing on the 2021 Jackson Hill Main Street Improvement District Assessment Role and Budget. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we'll patch you through the meeting. Okay, this is the last call for the public hearing on the 2021 Jackson Hill Main Street Improvement District Assessment Role and Budget. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, please provide me with your full name and telephone number through the live event Q and A, and we'll patch you through the meeting. Okay, no one else has contacted me through the live event Q and A. May I have a motion to close the public hearing on the 2021 Jackson Hill Street SID Assessment Role and Budget?
Motion.
Motion made by?
Ridley.
Sorry?
Ridley.
By Councilperson Ridley.
Second.
Thank you. And seconded by Councilperson Prinzieri. On the motion to close the public hearing on the 2021 Jackson Hill Main Street SID Assessment Role and Budget, Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson LaVaro.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Wardman.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero to close the public hearing on the 2021 Jackson Hill Main Street SID Assessment Role and Budget. Okay, now we're moving on to our request for hearing. We were going to be calling the members listed on the agenda from 5.1 through 5.44. Please be by your phone. We will only call your home or whatever number you provided us one time, and we will move on to the next speaker. With that being said, we are trying to get speaker, the first speaker on the line. I believe we have our first speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please. So we have our first speaker on the line. Okay, we're trying to get our first speaker on the line. We have our next speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please. Hello? Patrick, are you on the line?
Oh, yes, I thought I was number two.
Okay. Your time is going to start on my countdown. Time is going in three, two, one, go.
Hi, this is Patrick Conlin, president of Bike JC. Just wanted to talk a little bit real quick about the ordinance for converting Baldwin to one way. Was kind of disappointed to see that that got tabled without a public comment period. I mean, I'm not surprised that it's tabled, because there certainly is a lot of work to do on that. This is, this is really early in the game. We understand that. But I think, you know, you're going to have a lot of people to, making comments about it after me. The main thing I really wanted to say about it is that this is my neighborhood. I live in the Heights. I've been property owner in the Heights, right off of Baldwin Avenue since 1991. Thirty years here. And I know Baldwin Avenue, and it's, it's a very dangerous road. The intersection at the end of my block of Baldwin and Laidlaw, the number of crashes there, it's, I mean, it's crazy. And, and, I mean, we've had a crash where a car ended up crashing into the front door of the, of the deli, right on that corner. We had a bus crash into the hair salon on the other side of the same intersection. And, and, yeah, in that instance, there was a car that ended up like smashed up in front of Bobby D's, a block away, that I think hit off, hit off that bus. The speed on Baldwin is dangerous. I fear a heck of a lot for pedestrians that have to cross Baldwin Avenue. I think converting it to one way, regardless of bike lanes, which is, you know, I'm interested in that. I want to see that. I think we need that. You know, we need to, we need to get connections into the Heights with, with the bike lane network. We need to expand it into the Heights. We need to expand it all over the city to make it really work. But I'm really, really concerned about the safety of Baldwin Avenue. And I think this is a, is a good step and a good possible solution to calm traffic on Baldwin Avenue. We know that the adding bike lanes makes the street safer for everybody who uses it, not just cyclists, but pedestrians as well. I just, I, I, I hope that, you know, when we get into having public meetings about this, and we get the studying going, that everybody involved, and particularly the council people in this ward, will show up to these meetings. You know, I know there was, there was meetings after the Bergen Avenue bike lanes got put in, but there was studies done there, but people didn't show up to those, to the meetings. You guys got to show up to the meetings, you know, ahead of, of stuff. So, so we don't have, you know, meetings afterwards with lots of people complaining. But people need to get involved. I hope people will do that. Appreciate the support to get the studies going.
Thank you, Fatima.
And, you know, that's what we need.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, 5.1 refused to speak, passed on speaking. So the next speaker, 5.3 is on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Jean Daly.
Okay, Jean, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Oh, thanks, Sean. Good evening, everyone. I'm, I guess my launching point is really the recent survey that went around, asking people in Jersey City what they wanted from these different neighborhoods, open spaces, parks, developments, et cetera. And kind of like what Councilman LaVaro was saying, it's all part of our roots. Because I do feel that oftentimes we have these surveys, but this, this administration does not listen to any of the public. How many times have we come out and pre-COVID at City Hall, really made our opinions clear, and yet the administration via the council totally ignores us? Same thing even with the online, the virtual meetings. So I just kind of see it as like sort of a half-baked joke in a way, but it did bring something up for me. And that is, the one thing that was certainly missing was where we have lost, or where are we going to have our places to share our cultural exchanges? I bring this up specifically because in the past, we had Exchange Place for that. That's where historically, we had all our cultural events. It was a magnificent backdrop, and it was quite dignified and quite glorious. I personally don't find the Turnpike Extension very glorious to me. It's not the beautiful backdrop. You don't get the breeze off the Hudson. And it is, it is not dignified in any way. Being on the river is very important. I think symbolically for a lot of people whose ancestors came via boat, whether in shackles, being sold into chattel slavery, or came out of need, out of not having any money, or being driven out of their homeland. So I, having that as a backdrop is very important to me. We used to have all our cultural events there. And when they're talking about open spaces, this is an open space for us. We need to preserve it as an open space. I mean, via that ordinance that you guys passed, you're stating that you're allowing a private roadway going through that. That's pretty much like saying, okay, forgive me for using New York as an example, but building a private roadway right through Central Park. Why are we not caring about our various cultures? This is very upsetting to me, because I find the way that we're looking at Exchange Place Plaza now as being exclusionary, being racist. I think it's economically and socially racist, how they're evicting all these different celebrations.
Sean.
It should be a place of unity, of culture. It should be a cultural Exchange Place Plaza. Yes, a cultural Exchange Place Plaza. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker is on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Leori.
Okay, Elizabeth, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
I just want to thank the council very much for, for hearing my statement today. I'm a resident of the Heights. I live at Webster Avenue and Congress Street, and I drive Baldwin Avenue twice a day in each direction. I just wanted to voice my support in favor of further study of the road, making it one way, and including bike lanes on the roadway. In my travels on Baldwin Avenue, I see just lots of really dangerous driving. People parked on the sidewalks, people parked in intersections, speeding, illegal passing. And as a driver, I honestly get very nervous for anyone who does bike on that, on that avenue. I don't, I get nervous trying to pass somebody, because I know that if there's, you know, one false move, that person, the consequences for that cyclist or that pedestrian are so much greater than for me as a driver. So I just wanted to voice being in favor of kind of the mild inconvenience of the directional change, in favor of having a more holistic approach to the, the transportation in our area. I say this as a, as a longtime resident, and as a parent of a child that I hope can have safe streets and the ability to bike around the city. So I thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, we're going to get our next speaker on the line. If you can bear with us. If, if the speaker has already spoke, if you can hang up the line, so we can move on to the next speaker, we greatly appreciate that. Okay, I believe our next speaker is getting patched through. If you are on the line, if you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Steven Stracchettanio, and I want to talk about the ordinance against directional change for Baldwin Avenue. You know, one of the things that I noticed.
Steven, Steven, hold on. I just got to give you my countdown, so your time will start, okay?
Sorry about that.
It's okay. Your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
You know, I read through this, the, you know, what they want to do on Baldwin Avenue, and then that prompted me to look at Vision Zero Zero, the Jersey City Bike Master Plan. And then also reading through the Bike Master Plan, it got, I got to a point where I'm like, okay, let me take a look at the Parking Management Plan. Now, with the Vision Zero Zero, I understand the goals. I understand what you want to do, what Jersey wants to do with Bike Master Plan. But again, looking through the Bike Master Plan, there's just a, you know, wouldn't regards to parking management, you go to the Parking Management Plan, and it says, we're not going to do anything in regards to lots and/or garages because of the sustainability goals. Now, I, with all, with all the bike stuff, look, I get it. You're not going to eliminate the bikes. People want to bike, I understand that. But there, there has to be some type of coexistence on these roads. And if there's no other alternative or no real, real solution that I've seen, you know, in regards to massive amounts of parking in these spaces along Baldwin Avenue, then why does the bike stuff keep getting pushed forward, but yet the parking management stuff just kind of just dwindles in no man's land, and then no one really listens to it? The startling thing that I see is that, you know, with, with the bike plans, is that they want to take, you know, the amount of people who are biking, from, which is currently about like 1% on, you know, according to the statistic, and push it up to 400%. I mean, you're, you're forcing people to want to have to bike. I mean, I, I choose firstly, as an individual, to not bike anywhere because I enjoy my car. I don't need to bike to places. But I, the whole overall thing is that I, I do think that this should be tabled, and there should be more of a public discussion on it as well. Because right now, what I'm seeing is that it just always comes down to, and I see this as arguments around different cities, is, you know, car people bad, car people do this, car people do that, you know, we're bike people, we want to do this. But really, there needs to just be more focus on actually having more discussion and more involvement. And the thing now with the pandemic that has currently happened, it's maybe a little bit difficult, you know, from my perspective, to go out and just try and talk to people. But in the future, it was mentioned before, I don't remember which councilman that said it, but having some time, some type of a timeline to it, you know, delay it, and then put a timeline to it, so that there could be more involvement in the public, from my perspective, to be able to do this. I, I mean, I personally, in, even with putting more people on the road, we keep putting the blame on car drivers and everyone else, but yet there's really no regulation and/or following for bicyclists to be able to say, all right, you are, you've proven safety enough according to some legislative body, or some type of testing, that you actually can ride a bike and go onto the street. Now, it doesn't mean every car driver that's passed the test knows how to drive a car properly, obviously, with all the fatalities and everything that do happen. But there, there just, I think there needs to be some sort of regulation before this thing just keeps getting spearheaded and going further and further and further, before it develops into something where we get to a point where we look back and say, oh, we should have thought about this. This is impacting a lot of other stuff. And I just think the pace at which it's going should just really be, just taken into account and should be tabled.
Thanks, Steven. Okay, we have our next speaker, 5.6 on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Nathan Oliver.
Okay, Nathan, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Hello, I was very excited to hear that the city was studying a redesign of Baldwin Avenue. I walk and bike along it frequently. Protected bike lanes have been shown to reduce crashes that cause injuries for pedestrians and drivers, as well as cyclists. In New York City, pedestrians actually saw the biggest safety benefit from this kind of street redesign. However, I was very disappointed to hear Councilman Bajiano say he was surprised the city was studying Baldwin Avenue. He said he wanted to table the ordinance so that there could be time for community feedback, and referenced the Bergen Avenue bike lane installation. I wasn't surprised by the Bergen Avenue bike lane installation, because I participated in the Jersey City Bike Master Plan Community Process. I even helped lay down street markings for the full-size, weekend-long demonstration of the Bergen Avenue bike lane. I also participated in the Vision Zero JC Public Process and the Jersey City Pedestrian Enhancement Plan Process. Both Vision Zero and the Bike Master Plan were adopted unanimously by the City Council. The Vision Zero website maps out Jersey City's High Injury Network, which includes Baldwin Avenue and Summit Avenue, as well as Bergen Avenue. From the Bike Master Plan, we see in Ward C that Baldwin and Summit, along with others, are slated for protected bike lanes. Baldwin Avenue and Bergen Avenue were both highlighted in the Pedestrian Enhancement Plan as in need of a safety redesign. I would encourage everyone on the City Council to take a look at the Bike Master Plan, Pedestrian Enhancement Plan, and the High Injury Network. Anywhere you see an overlap, such as Baldwin Avenue, it is in the community's best interest to act quickly. Given the extensive public Given the extensive public processes and that they were unanimously approved by the council, to raise the question of whether or not to redesign Baldwin Avenue should be well beyond the scope at this point. Mrs. Andriani, 73, enjoyed a retired life with her husband. She was in a Baldwin Avenue crosswalk when she was struck and killed by a distracted driver on October 10th, 2017. The building on that same corner has had a car go through it. Just up the block, a driver knocked me off my bicycle, broke my elbow, and set me on a path of months of physical therapy. This deadly street has remained unchanged despite these and other deaths and injuries. Unnecessary delay at this point is putting people's life and limb in jeopardy. I attended the meeting hosted by Councilman Boziano and Councilman LaVaro on the Bergen Avenue bike lane. One of the people who was upset about the bike lane being installed said that she quotes, "Never thought about bikes before." I had met her the previous week at a public meeting about parking that Councilman Boziano also attended. I'm in favor of community feedback, but we cannot allow driver convenience to lead the conversation. This section of Baldwin Avenue runs through the zip code with the most, with the highest percentage of car-free households in the city. As part of the public feedback period, how many council members will commit to riding a bike with me on Baldwin Avenue from Montgomery to Ferry? Will you walk the length of it? I look forward to working with my neighbors on a street that works for everyone in the community, but whether this street is redesigned should not be a question. We know it's dangerous and we should move forward as quickly as possible to save lives.
Thanks so much, Nathan.
Thank you.
I believe we have our next speaker on the line, 5.7. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Terrence Matthews.
Okay, Terrence, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
First, I don't believe that the people who oppose some of the bike lanes are anti-bike. They simply disagree with the placement of some of the lanes and the absolute lack of concern for stakeholders outside of cyclists, elderly, handicapped, children, commuters to a degree. I looked at your, at the ordinance as it's presented, and it's, the ordinance is contingent on the approval of the New Jersey Department of Transportation. It's contingent on the approval of the New Jersey Transit. It's never contingent on the stakeholders along Baldwin Avenue and the surrounding neighborhoods. I've dealt, obviously, with the Baldwin Avenue, the Bergen Avenue situation when everything was presented as a fait accompli. I talked to people regarding the Montgomery Street change, and it was a fait accompli. And quite honestly, I consider this to be a fait accompli as it is. But we were invited after the Baldwin, Bergen Avenue thing down to a meeting on September 9th, 2020 down at City Hall, a group of people. We spoke, we talked extensively with Andrew Vizio and several other people down there. We talked about Montgomery Street, et cetera. And the response that we had the next day was, "Regarding the interaction between cyclists and pedestrians based on our concerns at bus stops, we're going to pilot a raised bus stop at the one location, similar to what is depicted in the attached PDF that they sent to us. We've spoken with the Director of the Parking Enforcement Division to establish an enforcement and reporting plan. All right, we will arrange, we will report monthly citations for both streets and also provide data from prior months to establish a baseline." Every time one of these things occurs, it seems that there is, everything is reactionary as opposed to proactive. We look at the need for traffic lights. We look at the need for better signage. We look at the need for enforcement after it's all done. So, it never has a chance to change once it's implemented. And I think that's purposeful, quite honestly. We presented a study by the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety, which was done in August of 2019. And their conclusion was that double bike lanes are dangerous. All right, researchers found that calm residential streets were the safest places for riding. But even unprotected bike lanes had lower injury rates than two-way protected street-level bike lanes, the study showed. So, my concern again is, this has been decided, but there's no enforcement once it's decided. The bike lanes are crazy. And the way they're set up is, I think, dangerous. I have personally witnessed two accidents outside of Hudson Catholic where people accelerated when the light changed, thinking that the parked cars were moving forward and slammed into them. All right, so I'm just, I think it's a problem. Thank you.
Okay, I believe we have our next speaker on the line, 5.8. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi, this is Kevin Bing.
Okay, Kevin, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Thank you. I live two blocks from Baldwin Avenue. I want to address the safety improvements that were tabled tonight. I also want to jump back to the December 18th meeting, which is the last regular council meeting, where you were voting on the first reading of this ordinance converting Baldwin to a one-way street. This is an issue that Mayor Phillips stated publicly is needed to improve traffic safety and transform Baldwin into a complete street. Despite this, instead of voting, voting to move forward without comment, Councilperson Boziano made a pre-prepared statement that specifically stated he was withholding his support for the safety improvement on Bergen Ave. I understand why council voted to table tonight, but I would still like to know today, where does my councilperson stand on this issue? Are you committed to a safer Baldwin Avenue? Do you think a bike lane and other safety improvements are needed in our community? It's my understanding that the goal for today's vote to table is to make time for further study and community outreach. As a community advocate, I find those goals laudable and I look forward to participating fully in any process. While studying outreach is important, I don't want this process to turn into a political delay tactic. I value community input, but what makes a road safe isn't a popularity contest and should not be treated like a political football where the biggest and loudest team wins. I think the concern that has brought so many speakers on both sides of this issue to the meeting tonight is that politics are corrupting and delaying a vital safety improvement. I ask city council to prove us wrong. Commit your support to Vision Zero, bike lanes, and citywide safety projects. Ask the administration for a public timeline for when this project can be brought before council again. The danger posed by Bergen Ave is clear to anyone who's either walked the street or attended the many meetings and feedback sessions we've already had on these topics. I have, along with many of the councilpeople in attendance tonight, attended multiple study and outreach sessions regarding Vision Zero, pedestrian safety plans, parking, and bike safety. In fact, the city already has a master plan for each of these subjects, which is a previous speaker, speaker mentioned. Why Baldwin Ave is mentioned in multiple studies and is listed in the city's high injury network. Back in 2018, the city made a pledge to Vision Zero, which means zero traffic deaths or serious injuries by 2026. If that goal, and the council unanimously approved that, if that goal means anything to our city leaders, we need to step up and go on the record. Don't sit as silent observers who let others act and wait to score political points from the sidelines. You all have microphones in front of you. You all have Facebook accounts. Share your support for this project. Engage in the process going forward. Be advocates for safety. Be advocates for your community. Thank you very much and good night.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we have our next speaker on the line, Speaker 5.9. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Michael Flink.
Okay, Michael, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Thank you. My name is Michael Flink. I live on Reservoir Avenue near the intersection of Baldwin and Ward C. I support the ordinance to make Baldwin Avenue a one-way street to allow space for protected bike lanes. Baldwin Avenue is very dangerous. Every time I walk or need to cross this street with my kids, I get very nervous. Recently went on a family bike ride on Baldwin Avenue. A driver passed us against oncoming traffic in a dangerously unsafe manner, and it was so dangerous that a police officer saw the action and pulled over the vehicle. Those kinds of close calls are not, are commonplace on Baldwin Avenue, and I've experienced them many times as I've ridden my bike around the city. I do not want that to happen to anyone else. We need to do something about this by changing how the street is designed to accommodate all road users. People riding bikes should be able to get to the Journal Square Station and other areas of the city safely without taking their lives in their hands. I want to thank the council for introducing this ordinance, and I hope to see it back in front of the council soon.
Thank you very much. Okay. Once we're done speaking, if we can hang up the line so we can get the next speaker patched through, I believe we have the next speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Lindsay Buller-Maliéco.
Okay, Lindsay, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
I am calling in just to say that I really support the Webster-Baldwin becoming one-way and that they're becoming protected bike lanes. I live on Borum and Webster, so that, that is right on Webster, right near the end of what it is we're talking about. And we are a carless family. So, that means that my husband, who worked in Jersey City, at least prior to the pandemic and was going down every day, was biking every day. And the stories that he would come back with every day made me really concerned for his safety as he continued to try to commute down to his job every day, trying to manage through these streets. And my kids used to ask, can, you know, can we go biking with daddy up through these streets? And we had to talk about it and make the decision that we didn't feel comfortable with it because of the kind of speeds we see on Webster. So, I guess I just really want to say I appreciate and laud that we want to have more community comment. I look forward to participating in it, but I hope that this doesn't stop. And I hope that we move forward rather quickly on it because at this point, it feels dangerous up here and it feels dangerous to live on that street. And I would much prefer it to feel calmer, safer, and more bike-friendly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, if we can hang up the phone once we're done speaking so we can get the next speaker patched through the meeting. I believe we have our next speaker on the line, 5.11. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Yvonne Ballser.
Okay, Yvonne, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Okay, because of the timeline, I'm only going to read the first names of a lot of people except for the first two. David Dawn, David Matee, Chris Dorian, Italia Marquis, Patrick Calvin, James, Javier, Barry, George, Jose, Victor, Marvin, Harris, Antonio, Summer, Saucier, Jessica, Joseph, Anthony, Aaron, Michael. These are the people that have died from the riots during the summer. One of them included a person whose body they discovered when they put the fire out. So, when you start talking about attacking the president, about comments he made in which he didn't tell people to riot, you're totally holding back on the mayors and the governors that held back the cops and these people through violence died. You also did not have an ordinance condemning Senator Cory Bookman of New Jersey, who says, "Get in the faces of some congresspeople." And later on, Ron Paul and his wife were attacked. Neither do I see an ordinance attacking Maxine Waters, who told people to go after Republicans in stores and gas stations. Look, what happened is absolutely wrong, but to ignore all the other stuff and focus on one thing is pure politics. And I think I know what's wrong, you know what's wrong, and you're just playing politics. So, that's what I just want to say. I was not going to bring this up until I saw in the Jersey Journal that you're doing this. These 26 people are dead because of politics to a certain extent because these mayors did not want to use their political whim to put these riots out because it was politically not correct. And I think that's absolutely wrong that people are ignoring this. I absolutely think it is wrong. So, it was not my intent to speak on this. I want to speak on something else. Since I'm going to speak on something else, I just want to say that I think the city should be handing out postcards to everyone who lives in the area of a bike lane and ask them if they use a bike. Because is this too much of one group being heard by City Hall? There is, I don't think that the mayor uses his newborn child and put his newborn child on a bike and bring that child to the doctor. There are people in the city that need their cars. And I think if you're going to, in that area, the city should spend the money and the time and mail out things and ask every resident, "Do you use a bike? Do you have a car?" And stop listening to one voice all the time. I never put my child on a bike when they were little. We had to have the car to bring them, our children, to the doctor, especially in their brother. I yield my time.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we have our next speaker on the line, 5.12. You can identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi, I guess that's me. My name is Scott Garapolo, and thank you for allowing me a few minutes here. I just wanted to speak about-
Scott?
Yes, sir.
Hold on one second. I just want to give you a countdown so we can start your time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
All right, hello, my name is Scott Garapolo, and I just wanted to talk about the whole bike lane situation. I realize some people have a different vision, you know, for the city, but, you know, I'm raising two young daughters here in Ward D, and I want to get them out and I want to get them pedaling on their bikes instead of just driving them around. And we really, we really do that. You know, we often go down to Pershing Field, we head down Summit, and, you know, those, those local trips are perilous. I mean, and more often than not, I end up just putting bikes on the back of the car and driving somewhere safer, Liberty State Park or out of town. But on, on the local trips, I ride on the streets and my girls are on the sidewalks. And I've had many numerous, you know, I mean, I've had all sorts of interactions with hostile drivers and I don't know if they get spooked by nearly hitting someone, but then you get raging people stopping their cars to reprimand you for being on the street or pedestrians, you know, shouting to keep the kids off the sidewalks or joggers telling us that Pershing Track is for joggers only. And so, I mean, I'm sure we're all in agreement that these changes, you know, the one-way street, the protected bike lane, that would make things safer. And that's the vision I have for Jersey City. And people that think, "Well, I don't, I don't ride my bike." Well, there will be less cars, clearly. This is, I, this, it's nothing new if anyone's been to Amsterdam or something like this. There are less cars out there and we could, we would take our kids to the grocery stores and the farmer's markets and the shops on Central and to the doctor. And most importantly, I just, I feel it's an upgrade that this neighborhood, especially the way it looks now, deserves. So, I, I hope that you all will put that, you know, forefront. I know you have a lot of things on your docket. I think it's something that would really improve this neighborhood. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all, and thank you.
Okay, if we can hang up the line so we can get the next speaker patched through, I greatly appreciate it. I believe we have our next speaker on the line, 5.13. Elena, are you on the line? Okay, Elena, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Thanks, my name is Elena Little. I'm calling today because I would have supported moving forward with converting Baldwin Avenue to a one-way and adding a two-way protected bike lane. Thank you to councilmembers Solomon and LaVaro. Sorry, can you hear me? There's some background noise.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so thank you to councilmembers Solomon and LaVaro for advocating for members of the public to be heard on this and for this issue to be resolved in a timely manner. As we all know, Baldwin Avenue is super dangerous. A quick Google search will turn up any number of crashes. And in such a densely populated, transit-oriented area, I think we really have to be asking ourselves, "What are we doing to improve mobility and safety for everyone?" So, pedestrians, cyclists, bus and train riders, as well as car owners. We know the data shows that bike lanes improve pedestrian and driver safety as well as cyclist safety. So, fewer crashes overall. Many people living in Journal Square, McKinley Square, and the Heights don't have cars or may only be a one-car household, meaning other family members are likely pedestrians, cyclists, and/or transit riders on any given day. So, I know, speaking for myself, I did not own a car during the years that I lived in Ward C. I was a pedestrian and public transit user, and I frequently had near misses as a pedestrian. So, I, I hope that we use this time to really take a holistic look one that considers all forms of mobility fairly and prioritizes safety for those who are most vulnerable in a crash, which would be pedestrians, pedestrians and cyclists because they don't have the protection of a car surrounding them. So, if this will mean fewer crashes overall, I think we can all agree that is a good thing. So, I did think that that one-way conversion and that proposed protected bike lane was a great idea. It could really form a much-needed north-south conduit forming the backbone of a future truly city-wide interconnected network of protected bike lanes. Right, we've seen a number of protected bike lanes and bicycle infrastructure improvements in the past few years in, but it's been disproportionately concentrated in Ward E. So, I believe that people from all parts of the city deserve safe streets, safe pedestrian and cyclist infrastructure, and not just in the downtown area. So, I truly hope that this Baldwin Avenue- So I truly hope that this Baldwin Avenue and Summit Avenue, these improvements can move forward in a timely manner before there's yet another avoidable death. In my remaining time, I also wanted to ask, raise a couple of questions. On 10.46, I, the bespoke health LLC contract, I wanted to kind of bring up how thoroughly this was vetted. You know, I, you know, I saw some people did some research and it sounded like the company only formed a couple of months ago. And I just, you know, I really don't think we can afford to screw up the vaccine deployment in Jersey City.
Thanks, Elena. Thanks, Elena. Your time is up.
Even with my interruptions earlier, I just had one more question real quick.
Your time is up.
So Jersey City. Okay, well, some of my time was taken from me earlier. So the Jersey City Master Plan surveys, I just wanted to know whether summary data would be publicly available. Thank you.
To move on. Thank you. Okay, we have our next speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi, this is Laura Moss.
Okay, Laura, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Hi, yes, I'm a long-term resident in, off of Baldwin Avenue. I lived off of it for about, lived on it for eight years. And now I live, you know, off of it for the past 17. And I don't think the issue is necessarily Baldwin Avenue going one way. I think eventually that's a really good idea. I think traffic will flow better. But I don't think that the, I'm glad this has been tabled because the ripple effects are, have not been addressed in terms of just, just focusing on Baldwin. And the ripple effect is Summit Avenue. The area in between 139 and Montgomery on Summit Avenue is where the bulk of this southbound traffic is going to be forced. And I don't think anyone's looking at that or High Street or New Kirk or Rock Street or Academy, which is where all this traffic will be flowing, jumping back and forth. I think the two have to be considered together instead of separately with this idea of a bike lane and everything's going to be wonderful. When along Summit Avenue, I'm not sure if the council's aware, I know Councilman Bajano is aware of this, but in between Route 139 and Montgomery on Summit Avenue and also the new Central Avenue extension, there is roughly eight to 10 major projects that have been approved. And when I mean major, I mean over 18 stories. I mean, there's on both sides of the street in addition to the Justice Complex. So what you're going to end up doing is forcing all this traffic to go through this gauntlet on Summit two ways. And you're going to be burdening it with extra traffic, which is going to create a whole slew of traffic issues, other issues. And so if you're going to do this, do it right. Do both streets, figure it out, and figure out where all the, the pain points are going to be. Because no one seems to be addressing that. All I hear is Baldwin, 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 when the entire neighborhood is being turned upside down and including the new Justice Complex, which is also being built adjacent to all of this. So it's, it's rather extreme to do this to all the residents who live on all the side streets, the cross streets. I know this because I live on Washburn, and when Route 139 was rehabilitated, all the left turns were eliminated on Route 139. And Washburn became a casualty of that because we became a shortcut. And the intersection of Washburn and Baldwin became extremely dangerous. So I, as a resident, lobbied successfully with Traffic and Engineering and with Councilman Bajano and with this council. And you agreed, and you've changed the direction of my street. It's one block long. How many more situations like that are going to be created by turning Baldwin one way? While I agree that it's going to be a good idea and it's inevitable, it needs to be addressed, all of these little issues so that further down the line, we don't create a whole bunch of new problems. We have the time to address it properly, so let's please do it correctly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If we can hang up the line as we move on to the next speaker, I greatly appreciate it. I believe we have our next speaker on the line, Speaker five point 15. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi, this is Daniel Cohen. Can you hear me?
Yes, Daniel, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Okay, hi, I'm calling about the proposal for the new bike lane. It's been strong support. I actually, I, I don't own a car. I primarily travel around on a scooter. And I, I've traveled around the area, but I haven't, I've avoided traveling on that street before because it's kind of unsafe. And so the new bike lane would actually, would be a huge improvement. I would be a lot more likely to, to, to travel there. So, so yeah, that's all I have to say. Just, yeah, strong support for the bike lane. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. If we can hang up the line so we can patch through the next speaker through the system, I appreciate it. Okay, thank you very much. We are trying to get the next speaker on the line. Just bear with us a sec. Okay, I believe we have our next speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please. Speaker five point 16.
Hi, my name is Elise Nussbaum, and I live on Sherman Avenue and Congress Street.
Okay, Elise, Elise, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Elise Nussbaum, and I live on Sherman Avenue and Congress Street in Ward D. And I just wanted to say that I do support adding protected bike lanes to Baldwin slash Webster. And I won't get too much into the details because I've heard a lot of excellent points about pedestrian safety and bicyclist safety and safety for drivers. You know, I do have a kid that I would love to be able to bike around. And I think that it is important to look at this as a way to connect the Heights and Ward D to other parts of Jersey City. You know, we want to be able to have alternatives to cars and, you know, polluting vehicles. And I think that having these bike lanes and tying the city together in that way would be an excellent way to make that happen. So that is all I need to say right now. Thank you so much for considering this. Thank you for your support. And I look forward to, you know, continuing along on this journey with everyone. Good night.
Thank you so much. Okay, if you can hang up the line so we can get our next speaker patched through, I greatly appreciate it. Okay, we're just trying to get our next speaker patched through. Just bear with us.
Hi, I'm Juan, if you can hear me.
Oh, okay. Is it Chris?
Yes, this is Chris.
Okay, Chris, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
All right, thank you, and happy new year to everyone. I'm a homeowner in the Hilltop neighborhood, just a block off of Baldwin Avenue. I do not own a car, but sometimes rent one when needed. But most often I'm walking or using a bike to travel around my neighborhood to and from other parts of the city to do errands, get groceries, things like that. So I have perspective on four wheels, two wheels, and two feet in this corridor. Also professionally, I'm a, I'm 15 years into a transportation planning career, so I look at Baldwin and other streets in Jersey City kind of through that lens when witnessing the congestion, road rage, occasional crashes, frequent near misses, and including some of the violent crashes we've seen and fatal crashes on this corridor. A few of the issues, I itemized in an email to council, you know, where we have two-way traffic with no left turn lanes. We have vehicles waiting to turn. That contributes immensely to congestion in this corridor. And also to rushed turns ahead of oncoming traffic that have contributed to some of the really bad crashes that we've had in this corridor. The street's built to a higher design speed than the posted speed limit, which really just encourages speeding and reckless driving. And, and then also, you know, cyclists have no safe accommodation in the corridor. Their choices are to ride in the general purpose lanes and be subject to the hostility and sometimes violence of some motorists. I've experienced that myself. Or the alternative is to ride in the sidewalk where they're putting pedestrians at risk. Both options are terrible. So a previous caller talked about coexistence, but our existing infrastructure doesn't support that now. And it's a big issue in Hilltop and Journal Square area. That's part of Ward C. Forty-seven percent of households have no automobile, either by choice or by need. We're one of the most densely populated neighborhoods in the whole country with thousands more housing units on the way. In my building, we're five units, eight people, four bikes, and zero cars. And that's a common thing here. So, you know, also in light of the pandemic, you know, we have food deliveries, other gig economy workers who are using bikes to perform their jobs or earn their livelihoods, often after dark. You know, these aren't people joyriding. They're, they're trying to earn a livelihood, and their jobs are needlessly dangerous. There are some other points in my email, but just in the interest in staying on time, I just want to say that I support the proposed change to Baldwin Avenue. One-way pairs aren't mysterious, not a new idea. There are some local specific issues to work out. But, you know, I think they're, they're doable. I think safety and efficiency of transportation are not zero-sum issues. All users stand to benefit. And, and so I don't think it's, you know, an issue of cyclists being against motorists or vice versa. I think, I think everyone could benefit from safety improvements. So I support the concept. When paired with traffic calming, I agree with Kevin who spoke earlier, saying that, you know, it isn't a popularity contest, that action is needed and soon. So I hope you'll act soon to address this very real and present problem.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Okay, I believe, well, five point 18 declined to speak, so we're moving on to five 19. I believe we have that speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Good evening, Sumit Galhotra.
Okay, Sumit, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Good evening, council members, and a happy Lordy to my fellow Hindu and Sikh brothers and sisters as we celebrate this festival today. I'm a resident of Ward C. Streets in our ward are some of the most dangerous in the city. I say this as a pedestrian, as someone who relies on public transit, as well as a car owner. For too long, mind you, by the way, I just mentioned these three ways that I can, I get around in the city. I do not own a bike. I'm not a cyclist. But I am an advocate for shared roads. For too long, we prioritize cars in the city and have done too little to address safety for our streets. We now have an opportunity to start adding a protected network of bike lanes and other safety improvements in our ward. I welcome these improvements and would urge the city to lay out a clear timeline and do much more to create an extensive and well-connected network of protected bike lanes in and beyond our ward. In the time of COVID, we are increasingly relying on delivery workers. They deserve better and safer streets, as do the 40% of residents who don't own cars. I'm tired of my neighborhood being treated as a traffic sewer. I'm tired of the leaders and the few loud voices who are detached from our lived realities, whose understanding of the city is informed mainly from behind their windshield. We are all watching closely, and I'm, and we're just less than a year away, and we'll be holding all of you accountable at the polls. I urge this body to take clear and meaningful and immediate steps to advance shared and safe streets for us all. I'd like to leave you with this passage from the inspiring writer and advocate Arundhati Roy. Historically, pandemics have forced us, humans, to break with the past and imagine the world anew. This one is no different. It is a portal, a gateway between one world and the next. We can choose to walk through it, dragging the carcasses of our prejudice and hatred, our avarice, our data banks and dead ideas, our dead rivers and smoky skies behind us. Or we can walk through it lightly with little baggage, ready to imagine another world and ready to fight for it. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. If we can hang up the line so we can patch the next speaker through the system, I greatly appreciate it. Okay, I believe we have Speaker five point 20 on the line. If you can identify yourself with the record, please.
Good evening, Adam Cohen, longtime listener, longtime caller as well.
Okay, Adam, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Evening. I am calling with regards to the Baldwin Avenue bike lane, our changes to Baldwin Avenue. While I understand the desire for further study, I want to register my strong support for a broad evaluation of streets in and around the Journal Square neighborhood with a definitive timeline as advocated for by councilperson Solomon and LaVarro. Journal Square is the highest concentration of high-injury network streets in Jersey City, of which Baldwin Avenue was one of those streets, with the Heights not far behind. For far too long, bikers have been simultaneously demonized by pedestrians for riding on sidewalks because it's unsafe to ride in the streets and by drivers for riding in streets because it is against the law to ride on the sidewalk. The city has made good strides in providing protected bike lanes, but once bikers arrive in Journal Square, they're spitting to traffic lawlessness. We hear constant complaints about cyclists running red lights and disregarding pedestrians. As a cyclist, I strongly condemn such behavior in no uncertain terms. However, I walk my dog on a daily basis on these same streets and see drivers in much heavier vehicles running red lights, speeding, and disregarding pedestrians. I have never heard an opponent of bike lanes move to condemn such behavior, which poses a far greater risk to pedestrians and cyclists than any cyclist does. A prior speaker mentioned that anybody who lives on Baldwin Avenue should be mailed a postcard so that they can get, so that they can provide feedback. My question to them would be, why aren't I given a postcard so that I can get feedback on the traffic on my street? I live on St. Paul's, which several people have called the traffic sewer. It is used as a cut-through. And nobody has ever asked me my opinion on whether I think cars should be banned, and I am a car owner. I heard another speaker talk about changes to her street that were, that were championed by our Ward C councilperson. I find it somewhat hypocritical that that caller mentioned that, given that when I asked for a slow street on St. Paul's Avenue, she was one of the main opponents because changing, closing down St. Paul's to through traffic would have inconvenienced her and made her commute two minutes longer. We often prioritize cars in this city because that is quote-unquote what has historically been the case. We ignore the fact that cars only existed post-early 1900s. We often hear about how nobody uses bike lanes without any further thought into why that is the case. We hear that people can't use bike lanes in inclement weather. We hear that the only people who use bike lanes are fit young men. As a 200-plus-pound semi-obese person, I have biked to and from work in 20-degree weather and in the rain. I assured you that I would ride my bike far more in Jersey City if I felt even a semblance of safety doing so. Bike lanes are a classic field of dreams initiative. If you build it, they will come. I hope that we can build bike lanes, and we will see improvements across our cities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If we can hang up the line so we can move on to the next speaker, I greatly appreciate it. We are getting our next speaker on the line. If the next speaker is on the line, if you can identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Tom Horsefield.
Okay, Tom, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Hi, my name is Tom Horsefield, and I am not in support of the protected bike lanes. If you look at Vision Zero, where it started in New York City, the police, fire, and EMT unions did a, did a study. And the study shows that the traffic congestion caused by these protected bike lanes and other measures used to slow down traffic have increased a lot of the response times and therefore have led to, to, to deaths and people suffering. I also don't think the bike lanes are a good measure at this particular time due to all of the construction in the area. I grew up on High Street, or actually Perrine Avenue off of High Street, in the heart where the bike lanes would be going through. And I've used every mode of transportation in the last 45 years to get around. I've walked, I've biked, I use the path train, buses, and obviously I drive a car. If you're going to take away half the parking on Baldwin Avenue, you're going to inconvenience the workers in that city, and you're going to make them move somewhere else. Now, there's going to be a big project on Baldwin Avenue where Mueller's Macaroni was, and they're going to have cranes, constant deliveries. It, I don't think, I think from the past, whenever they closed Baldwin Avenue down and made it one lane, when they were putting those, the new electric lines, it totally crippled the city. You couldn't get anywhere. So I think right now, with, with all the development. So I think right now, with all the development on High Street, Perrine Avenue, Baldwin Avenue, and then the countless buildings that are going up on Journal Square, if you do the bike lane right now, cars, bikes, nothing is going to move in the city. I think it's a terrible move, and that's all I have to say, and I'll give up the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, if we can hang up the line so we can get the next speaker patched through, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, we're trying to get the next speaker on the line. Okay, we're trying to get the next speaker patched through, just bear with us. Okay, I believe we have the next speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Robert Farron.
Okay, Robert, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Hi, my name is Rob Farron. I live on Lenaw Place and Ward C. I just wanted to voice my strong support for a one-way street on Baldwin with the protected bike lane. I bike, and I walk, and I drive, and frankly, I don't feel safe doing any of those things. I've had a, you know, a bunch of near misses, people have told stories. And one thing I notice when I'm driving, in particular on Baldwin, is you see people waiting to cross the street all the time at the crosswalks, and cars just don't stop, and they're just going too fast. And it, you know, just dangerous being around there. Another thing I want to mention is that I have a young daughter that I'm raising in the neighborhood, and I would like for, you know, for her to be able to walk and bike and do all these other things safely. And really, that's about it. I just, that's all I want to say, and thanks for listening to me.
Thank you so much. If we can hang up the line so we can patch the next speaker through, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much. We are trying to get the next speaker on the line. Okay, we're trying to get the next speaker on the line. Appreciate your patience, ladies and gentlemen, and council president, and president, I mean council members. Just trying to get these speakers called and patched through. Just a reminder to members of the public who are listening, if you can please stand by your phone, because you will be called in the order that you are listed on the agenda. I believe we have our next speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi, good evening, my name is Nalvi Evergonia.
Okay, Nalvi, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Thank you. I just heard most of the people that talked into this, into the hearing, and it's interesting that most of the people that are fully okay with having the two bike lanes are mostly on the other side of, like, on the Heights. I live in High Street, and I cannot agree more with Tom Horstfield. High Street right now has so many things going on. We are getting two buildings with over 100 units, no parking. We have already another building that was created, no parking. You are given a concentration of traffic to this street that is not even almost drivable due to the conditions of the street. So I don't understand who's planning these things. I don't understand, and don't get me wrong, I believe that there should be biking lanes. That's not like what I'm deciding. The problem is, is that right now, the traffic patterns are going to be completely ridiculous. You're going to overcrowd the cities. You're going to overcrowd the streets. These streets are small. Even in downtown, you have streets that have two-way parking on both sides of the street, not on Journal Square. You come to High Street, you come to Rock Street, you could only park on one side of the street. You could only, you have only access to very limited parking. We have the motor vehicle people coming in, are parking on these streets. And if I invite any of you to come and see how deplorable the conditions are on High Street and the surrounding areas. And yet, the city keeps on increasing all these ordinances, all these things that seem to be completely out of any planification. I don't understand how that's okay. And again, like, we should all have a say on everything, but it's ridiculous to have the thinking that you do not need a car, no matter what, for emergency purpose. Most people do rely on a car. Even me, who walk my son to school all the way on St. Paul's from High Street in the mornings when there's light classes during not the COVID season, I have a car, because if I have an emergency, I could go pick up my son right away. So I think the city should think properly and how they are, like, moving forward with all of these new things. I've been here for 20 years, and it doesn't get any better. On the contrary, it's getting so much worse. It's getting better for bicycles, it's getting better for people that, yeah, you're looking into them, but how about the people that have been here for these many years and nobody's listening to them? That's all I have to say. I hope you guys actually do some better planning in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I believe we have our next speaker on the line. If you're done speaking, if you hang up the line, I greatly appreciate it. Believe we have our next speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, hello, my name is Margaret Burt.
Okay, Margaret, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Hello, my name is Margaret Burt, and we have owned a home on Reservoir Avenue now for 12 years, but I'm a lifelong Jersey City resident. I'm grateful to the council that this is now tabled, the Baldwin Avenue bike issue and the one-way Baldwin Avenue issue, because now I feel very grateful that we have the time to hear about a comprehensive traffic study that I hope is done, keeping in mind that right now, traffic is especially light because of COVID. I have many concerns about Baldwin Avenue becoming permanently one-way. I'd like to know how the response times for ambulances, the fire department, the police department, et cetera, would be impacted, because even a minute delay could cause someone's death. It wasn't very long ago that we had our tenant who had a very severe allergic reaction. I called the ambulance because I witnessed her face and mouth becoming swollen right in front of me. Luckily, the EMTs arrived here so quickly. They put our tenant on our couch and gave her a life-saving IV right then and there. The gentleman who was here said if it was another minute, she would have died. Another time, this happened, something similar happened with my daughter, and a very serious illness, and a temperature of 104.5, and we were so grateful that we were able to get her to the hospital so quickly. Again, another minute, and she could have been dead. God forbid. We have to look at research that has been done. The New York Fire Department, their union, states that New York City's Vision Zero sadly has slowed down emergency response times. People have been injured, and people have even died. We have to be responsible as well, as I've been a Jersey City resident many years. I've used every different mode of transportation, including bicycles, my own two feet, and I am a motorist as well, and that we take everybody's opinion into account. We have to also look at the studies that have been done with two-way bike lanes that produce more injuries, unfortunately. Now may not be the time for a two-way bike lane on Baldwin Avenue. Right now, there's a plethora of construction. How would that impact getting deliveries to mom-and-pop stores? How would that slow things down? Could it be more unsafe at this time for bicyclists, for pedestrians? Have senior citizens been notified properly so that they could also tell us how they feel about their experiences as pedestrians in Jersey City? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Margaret. So speakers 5.26, 5.27, and 5.28 have refused.
Hello, my name is Lucy Dixon.
Hold on one second.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Be back.
Hold on one second. Okay, so we have our next speaker on the line, which is 5.29, Lucy Dixon. If you can, sorry, you're going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Hello, my name is Lucy Dixon. I'm calling in to, in support of Summit and Baldwin each being one-way. I know that right now, we're just talking about Baldwin, but eventually Summit. I'm speaking as a concerned citizen, a parent, and a resident of Summit Avenue. I'm also a nurse. I'm trained to assess for potentially dangerous situations, and I believe that both Baldwin and Summit are unsafe for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. They both accommodate an unsustainable volume of traffic for residential neighborhoods. I very much agree with a previous caller who spoke and said that it is not wise to make one of these streets one-way and not both of them at the same time. That would cause a problem. The flow of traffic is unpredictable in this neighborhood due to irregular street directions, such as inconsistent one-way streets and inconsistent placement of traffic lights. Traffic law is often ignored and unregulated. And in short, teaching kids to walk or ride bikes in this neighborhood is unsafe. It's terrifying for both my children's safety and for unsuspecting pedestrians who are at the mercy of a child's unpredictable gait or bike riding. One-way traffic will be safer for everyone. It will ease flow in and out of the neighborhood for the Heights inhabitants. Cyclists would be on a protected bike lane, increasing their safety and making the healthy lifestyle biking much more safe and accessible. And cyclists would no longer be on sidewalks, increasing safety for pedestrians. The Heights needs infrastructure that will ensure safety for inhabitants. Enhancing the walkability and cycleability of the Heights will promote healthy lifestyle choices. Making Summit and Baldwin one-way should be a priority for our neighborhood. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. If we can hang up the line so we can get the next speaker patched through, I greatly appreciate it. Council members, just for the, thank you so much, just for the record, speaker 5.21 was missing a number, and we did get the number, so that person is now on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Patricia Okone.
Okay, Patricia, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Hi, my name is Patricia Okone. I live in Ward C on Lenaw Place, and I am calling to support making Baldwin Avenue one-way for safety. And the reason for that is because I believe that pedestrian and community safety should be paramount. We know that driving behavior is generally terrible, and in Jersey City, which is dense and people-rich, bad driving behavior is manifests themselves in different ways. And the statistics and the stories that you've been hearing tonight are amplified by bad driving. I am a pedestrian, I bike sometimes, but I'm primarily a driver, and I do recognize this will be a barrier, and it will be annoying, and people will complain. But I really do believe this type of change is needed to benefit our community's quality of life. You've heard from many parents today that just want their children to be able to walk and bike safely. And so I am excited to continue this conversation, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. If we can hang up the line so we can get the next speaker patched through, I greatly appreciate it. Okay, while my office is working on getting the next speaker patched through, I just want to remind, ladies and gentlemen of the public who are listening, if you are on the speaker's list, please stand by your phone, because you're going to be called in the order that you are listed on the agenda. If you fail to pick up the line, we're going to skip, and we will not be calling anyone back. So with that being said, we're trying to get our next speaker on the line. Okay, speaker 5.30 declined to speak. 5.31, there was no answer. Okay, we're just trying to get the speaker patched through.
Hello.
Okay, I believe we have our speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Joe Burt.
Hold on, Joseph Burt. It's actually, is it Joanne that's next? Joanne, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, so Joanne, you're going first. Joe, you go after Joanne, okay?
Okay, great.
Okay, we just need you to stay quiet while Joanne's speaking, and then we'll call you and let your time go, okay? All righty, so Joanne, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Hi, I would like to address this to the council and the mayor, if he's there. I live right off of Baldwin Avenue, and it's a no-go for me with the one-way traffic. I've been living right off of Baldwin Avenue for probably 50 years. The traffic prior COVID has been a hot mess, and after COVID, with one lane, it would be a disgrace. There's no place to redirect traffic. If anything happens, it will cause major inconveniences and also use more fossil fuels, which I think everyone in the city is against that, to go around a few blocks. It's what Summit Avenue we have and Baldwin Avenue we have, and if you put it in one lane, it's going to be a hot mess. Okay, so there's also the two-lane improves livability, and there's higher economic activity for all the businesses around it. If we have to drive a few blocks, because you have to understand, in my neighborhood, I live on Magnolia Avenue, they're all one-lanes. If people have to drive one-way and go like five blocks to get somewhere, they're just not going to support these local businesses. With all the new high-rises and new courthouse... With all the new high-rises and new courthouse makes this impractical, and those living near Baldwin are really going to have a lower quality of life. I understand the bicycle thing. There's a bicycle lane right on Magnolia Avenue where I live. People don't use it. They prefer to use the sidewalk, or they just use the other side of the street. They're not using the bicycle lanes. And if you really need to measure the quantability of who is using the bicycle lanes and who are driving the cars, there's so many people driving cars, and with the new courthouse, it's just not a feasible and practical way. There's going to be more noise, there's going to be more pollution, traffic isn't going to be moving, and they're going to be going down all the sides of the side streets, the residential streets. The people that want a quality of life that live here, we really deserve a quality of life. I mean, there's building all around where I'm at right now. There's going to be so many more people, and we're not going to have any mobility unless you're very young and you could ride a bicycle. My mom's eighty-six, I'm fifty-two. It's not possible for us to ride a bicycle anywhere. And the last point I would like to make, it's a major throughway to get to the medical center, and I think this should be really spoken about. I don't know if you guys did any feasibility with traffic patterns. Right now, it's pretty easy to get around, but it's not going to be easy. Yeah.
Your time is, yes.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we have our next speaker on the line, Joseph.
Sean, who was that?
Say again.
Who was that person?
That was Joanne Gifford, Speaker number five point thirty-two.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, next speaker, five point thirty-three, Joseph Burt. I believe you're on the line.
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, very good. Joseph, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Thank you, and I too am a resident of Reservoir Avenue, right adjacent to Baldwin. And I do oppose making Baldwin one way because it's going to start a snowball effect, which will then mean that Summit Avenue becomes one way. And it brings us back to the time when construction on the state highway meant that Baldwin was backed up. So traffic will seek another alternative to flow, especially now when people are using devices in their car that show them the path of least resistance. And where did they go? They went down the side streets, Reservoir, Orham Avenue, Laidlaw. These streets took over what traffic couldn't be accommodated on Baldwin, and that will just occur permanently if Baldwin is made one way. Same thing if Summit is made one way. And certainly, I respect the bicycling public, the people who feel that we shouldn't rely on automobiles as much. But the reality is, if you look around Jersey City, every new development comes with additional cars. Behind Christ Hospital, there are cars parked all over now. Every new high-rise, there are cars parked. So people aren't ready to give up the automobile just yet. We're ahead of the other cities. Jersey City has more bike lanes than Newark, and I know the mayor likes to compare us to Newark and says we need to, you know, be on level playing ground with them. But let's take a pause and let them catch up to us and see how this works. And then finally, as again, I say, I respect the bicycle folks who've been on here voicing their opinions, but certainly what we do have now are more and more motorized bicycles, these unlicensed, unregulated renegades, just disregard any kind of decency when they're out there. And the bicycle lanes are just going to encourage them to, you know, utilize that space more and more. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. If you can hang up the line so we can patch the next speaker through the system, I greatly appreciate it. Okay, I believe we have the next speaker online, five point thirty-four. Are you there?
Hello?
Steve, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Steve, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Thank you. Hello, everyone on the council. This is Steve Cunningham. I hope you're all doing okay. And, you know, as always, I thank you guys for your service to the city. I'm also here to talk about the move to make Baldwin one way and have a bike lane there. Unfortunately, I was not able to watch for too much time earlier tonight, so I don't know if you guys have already voted on it, so we'll see if I'm wasting my time or not. But I live not far from Baldwin. I'm on or across Baldwin every single day, and I actually do it by, you know, almost every method. I'm on my feet, I'm cycling, or I am driving a car. The one way I'm never on Baldwin is by bus, and that is because the bus situation in Jersey City is just, it's too inconvenient. I mean, I feel like it's always been this way. I remember, I don't know, fifteen years ago, when I was teaching at Snyder High School and taking classes at St. Peter's, I would typically after school, I would just walk to St. Peter's because, you know, I could get there almost as fast as taking a bus. And I think it's something the city needs to address. Now, even though I'm now, or pre-COVID, I was on my bicycle every day, either going to work or getting around town, I'm just not certain that bicycle lanes are what's needed there. I'm not saying it's not. I'm not saying we should do it. I just feel like we need more information. I would rather see the results of a study to see what the benefits a bike lane would bring. I do think the area does need something to alleviate traffic. I just don't know if bus lanes would be better, or tactical bus lanes, which is something I used to speak a little over a year and a half ago to Councilman Yun about, is the need for tactical bus lanes, temporary rush hour bus lanes that can be experimented with, and to see if they alleviate traffic in the city. This is, cities are experimenting with these across the United States. You do not need New Jersey Transit's permission to do these. You can put up a few cones, test it for a couple of weeks, and see how it goes. It requires, they're cheap, they're easy, there's tons of studies showing that they can alleviate major traffic, you know? So ultimately, I'm not saying I'm in favor of one method over another. I use all three methods to get around. I just feel like we need more information to figure out what would be best for all aspects of the city, for everyone, for the community, and to alleviate potential for accidents and flow of traffic. That's all I have. Thank you guys for listening, and goodbye.
Thank you very much. Okay, I believe we have our next speaker on the line. If the speaker has finished talking, if you can just hang up the line so we can patch the next speaker through, I greatly appreciate it. So do we have our next speaker on the line, Speaker five point thirty-five?
Yes.
Can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Hanny Aladell.
Okay, Hanny, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Thank you very much. I just want to say thank you very much for having me, first of all, and taking the time to listen to me. So I'm here on behalf of myself and my father, both food truck owners, and we work in like downtown Jersey City. You may have heard of us. My dad is like sixty-seven. He's been in this business since like mid-fifties, and he's really worked really hard to cultivate these locations. He works over on like Marin and Columbus, and also on Montgomery. And so, you know, we were actually really excited when the city was saying that they're going to, you know, sort of regulate the locations. And I've been coordinating, I was coordinating with Brian Platt before to ensure that we kept our spots, played very early on, I think it was like number three and four. And so, you know, my dad, like I said, cultivated these spots, you know, when he was like working and making like fifty dollars a day, basically, selling just five or six plates. And then, you know, also weathering COVID and still like staying in business. But then, we actually lost our spots because I think they were given to someone else. And I couldn't really just figure out why because we applied, like I said, I applied number three and four, and on Montgomery, there were four spots. So I couldn't really understand why. And then also on another spot, on Marin Columbus, we had applied for the corner location, which is where we worked before. But I think sometime between when we applied and when the spots came out, there was another spot added, actually like that took the corner from us, but, you know, we never really got the chance to apply for that. So I just think that there's more equitable way we could have, you know, divided up the spots. And to be clear, I just want to make it very clear, I don't have any problem with anyone in like the business administration. I think actually like they're wonderful people. Eric Fleming is like super responsive. Melissa Kaszczewicz, I don't know if I'm saying her last name correctly, but very nice people, very responsive. I remember Eric, I think responded to an email like ten PM on a Friday. So they're doing great work. I don't want to like throw anyone under the bus or say anything like, you know, bad about them. They're actually great. I just think that there's a more equitable way we could have done it. And if I could just make a humble suggestion, I would say like if we look at the parking ticket records, because again, we were like Jersey City's been trying to regulate it for a while, but they were handing out more tickets in the past. And so if you just look at the parking ticket records, you can see which trucks have been in which locations, and you can also see the date, the time, and the license plate. So you can actually just make sure which trucks have been in which locations and for how. So again, that's really all I want to say. Again, I just wanted to thank everyone in the business administration, everyone in the city council who's, you know, doing all the hard work that you guys are. Also, you know, I just want to say everyone stay safe, keep their masks on, and yeah, thank you very much. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. If we can hang up the line after we're done speaking so we can patch the next speaker through, I really appreciate it. Thank you. Have a great night. Okay, I believe we have our next speaker on the line, five point thirty-six, Ryan Williams.
Yes, hello.
Okay, Ryan, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Okay, thanks for having me. I want to support the traffic calming and bike infrastructure measure on Baldwin. There's a lack of calm, safe north-south cycling connections in Jersey City, especially in the Heights and Journal Square area. I've biked this stretch of Baldwin Avenue many times. It's always unpleasant and dangerous. One of my scariest experiences biking in Jersey City was on this stretch of Baldwin. I was going northbound around New Kirk. There was a large truck coming at me from behind, fast. They started honking from far back, like making it known they wanted me out of their way or something. I'm up against pinned, I'm like up against a parked car, sort of pinned, no way to get out of the way. It's fly past me, like really terrifying, just kind of ruins your week. Like this person could have just killed me for no reason. So horrible experience to subject vulnerable road users to, and it's a choice that we continue to make as a city to do this to people. My wife and I biked that stretch together once, and it was also traumatic without anything nearly that bad happening for somebody, you know, my wife who's like less of an experienced cyclist than me and just more of a casual user. So I really would appreciate people looking into this and the council working on it. And since I have some time still, and this has become a bit of an open sort of cars versus bikes brawl, I want to mention something I've recently gone pretty deep on that I don't think most people are up to date on, which is e-bikes. The e-bike market is maturing really quickly, and I don't think any of us have really that much experience with what it means for urban transportation. For a fraction of the cost of a car, you can get an incredible machine that can replace a lot of car trips, many more than regular bicycles have for all of the decades that this battle has been playing out in cities, right? And what's amazing is that they are a revelation for people of other ages and abilities who, yeah, it's like a regular bicycle is not really a feasible mode of transportation for them. My seventy-year-old parents got e-bikes and are replacing a bunch of car trips with them. I got one recently. It folds up, I keep it under my desk. It's been a revelation for my wife, who struggles more to bike around Jersey City on these unprotected roads. So I just encourage people to have an open mind about how people get around Jersey City now and in the future. The ironic thing is like getting more people on bikes, electric or not, is the best thing for people who do need to use their cars sometimes. Like drivers should want this stuff because like you don't want me to have to get a car. I don't want to get a car. I don't want to compete with you for parking. I don't want to sit in traffic in front of you, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm going to get another e-bike soon. I would love to like take people on rides, like go get your groceries, whatever. The bike Jersey City people know where to find me. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Okay, if we can hang up the phone so we can get the next speaker patched through, I greatly appreciate it. Okay, I believe we may have our next speaker on the line. If you're on the line, if you could please identify yourself for the record.
Yes, hi, I'm Ryan Moser.
Okay, Ryan, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, council, for hearing our comments tonight. My name is Ryan Moser. I'm from NGO Eight for Progress and the Hudson County Progressive Alliance, and I'm also speaking in support of Ordinance twenty dash one-ten. I have to admit, I don't know much about this project in particular, or how much in particular it's been studied or discussed, but I know that we, as a city, have spent years now studying and discussing the impact of safety improvements on our streets. We know these redesigned streets would be safer for people walking, people on bicycles, and yes, people driving cars. We also know that these changes are unlikely to have major impact on drivers' experiences, excuse me, despite their inevitable complaints. So when these complaints come, and we're already hearing them tonight, I just find some of them so ridiculous, especially the idea that it is bicycle lanes that cause delays in response times for ambulances, when I see cars all the time refuse to yield to emergency vehicles in Jersey City, and I know we all see it all the time. But anyways, I'm digressing. When we hear these complaints, I do hope that the council will be smart enough to remember the big picture. So in this country, we pay more attention to invented grievances from those who hold a privileged place, and we tend to ignore the more pressing needs of people who are ignored by society. And so in this particular instance, what I mean to say is that we privilege automobile transportation in this city, in this state, and in this country, and the results are catastrophic. Our traffic fatality rate is among the highest in the developed world, and our cities have become these sprawling warrens infested with smog-spewing tanks. And we know this is not sustainable. We know we have a limited time to change our carbon consumption habits, or we risk climate change so devastating that our world will no longer be inhabitable, at least not as it is today. Well, okay, so you're saying now redesigning two roads in one city, that seems minor, but if we further privilege our refusal of drivers to alter their habits in the face of this catastrophe, it's going to affect all of us and not just drivers. It's going to set us all back. So the great irony to this is, of course, that the drivers will be fine if we redesign these streets. They will adjust to new traffic patterns, and they'll find new places to park their cars. We've seen it every time we do a street design, people complain, and then everything's fine. And in fact, many of them will actually realize how much nicer it is to drive on calmer roads, and may even decide to ride the bus or bike, or even just walk on a road that actually provides a safe and pleasant space for all those options. We know this, and because that's one of the main reasons we want to redesign the roads. So please re-design and pass Ordinance twenty dash one-ten for the redesign of Baldwin and Summit avenues, or at the very least, set a firm timetable for these further studies so that this doesn't become another project that simply never gets off the ground. Thank you very much. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, I believe we have our next speaker on the line. Todd, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Good evening, council. My name's Todd Pagel. I'm not a resident of Jersey City. I was recently on the town council in Metuchen, New Jersey. I finished a term about three years, you know, just last year, just in January. And I'm calling tonight because I think this is the right time to kind of let you guys know just how of a large impact Jersey City, your policies, the mayor's policies, had on me and the council and the town of Metuchen while I was on the council. You know, I started on the council a couple of years ago, didn't know so much about bike infrastructure or pedestrian infrastructure, things of that nature, how to make our streets safer. And I look to Jersey City as an example. I look to you all on the council, I look to the mayor, I look to all the advocates that are calling in tonight to learn about these improvements. And I just can't say how influential you all have been, not only on Metuchen and myself, but on the state of New Jersey. So when you're looking at some of these projects and you're hearing some, you know, residents call in who aren't really sure that these bike lanes or pedestrian infrastructure is going to, you know, be a good idea, just know that that is the impact you are having on not only other towns, but on the entire state. Jersey City is leading the way. I was listening to a podcast this evening as I was coming home from work, and it was a podcast I probably listened to, you know, over thousands of people, and they mentioned Jersey City in the same- and they mentioned Jersey City in the same sentence as, uh, Paris, uh, which is a, you know, amazingly friendly bicycle and pedestrian city. Um, so keep up the great work, um, you know, keep advocating for these improvements because they're making Jersey City a better place to live. Uh, and they're making New Jersey a better place to live because we are, um, you know, we're following your lead. So keep it up, um, you know, please, you know, please think about those ordinance, um, uh, and discuss it and, and try to get it passed because the more bike lanes Jersey City builds, the more bike lanes are going to be built in the state of New Jersey and that's just, that's just better for everybody. So thank you so much. I'm going to cut it short because I know how late of a night it is. Uh, thank you all for all your service and, and keep up the great work. And all the advocates in Jersey City, uh, you keep, keep up the great work as well because, uh, you, you're pushing the envelope and you're pushing the needle. So I really thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, if we can hang up the phone so we can get the next caller patched through, I greatly appreciate it. I believe we have our next caller on the line, 5.39. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Katja Oltman.
Okay, Katja, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Yeah, I would also like to voice support for the Baldwin Avenue ordinance. Um, I live in Ward C by Journal Square and right now I'm definitely don't feel comfortable like riding the bike around in Jersey City, but I really like connected, uh, bike lanes, which Baldwin Avenue would help, like a, a system where all the bike lanes are connected in the city. I think would really motivate people like me who are still afraid, um, about traffic accidents. And I also wanted to comment, um, I was disappointed on Councilman Bogiano's, um, decision to abstain on the resolution condemning the Capitol attacks and also, uh, voting support for Trump's impeachment. Um, I think this is really a lesson for everyone on the team full of ballot that Bogiano is way too conservative. I mean, he's basically a Republican and I really don't understand how anyone who calls themselves a Democrat, um, can be proud to be on his ticket because he doesn't share the values that Democrats should have. And yeah, so anyone who says he's on his side, I really think should be ashamed. Uh, thank you. I yield the remainder of my time.
Okay, thank you very much. I believe we have our next speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Gabriel Elizondo.
Okay, Gabriel, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Hello, good evening, council. I'll try to make this fairly quick. I know it's a late night. Uh, first just wanted to thank you for your service on the council. We appreciate it, uh, very much. I live, uh, in Ward D, uh, near Sherman and Bowers and, um, I'm calling in support of the Baldwin, uh, project. You know, there was people that have been talking about like this is going to delay, um, delay response times of fire trucks and ambulances. I mean, we can just take that off the table because New York has already looked into this. Uh, response times dropped by 25 seconds in New York. New York looked into why and the answers were three things. Number one, bigger population, more people moving into New York City. Number two was increased construction, construction trucks and that blocking roadways. And number three congestion, that's cars. Those are the reasons that were given on why the response times were increased in New York City. What was not on that list was bike lanes because it wasn't a factor. So that's really, opinions are only as good as the facts you have to back up your opinion. So in that case, if people are against the bike lanes, that's fine, but don't be against it because of that, because it's just, the evidence doesn't support that. I, I, I bike and I bike on Baldwin occasionally when I, when I go commute into, uh, Journal Square. Um, there's been four times I've almost been hit, uh, seriously hit by a car. Thankfully it was close, close calls, but didn't happen. Two of the four were on Baldwin. Um, I'm going to continue to ride on Baldwin because I'm as safe as I can. I wear a helmet, I do everything I responsibly as a, a cyclist. So I'm going to continue to bike there. It's just a matter of, you know, is it going to be safer or is it not? And I would just implore you to, to, to think about that, um, consider it. Um, one-way streets are not a big deal. They're all over. Uh, yeah, it's going to funnel traffic in a different area. It, it happens. It's a, it's, it's, one-way streets are not this incredibly complicated thing. And I will just say last thing, I was, you know, I had a coffee one time and a friend of mine said, oh, you're, you're one of those bike nuts in Jersey City. You just, all you care about is bikes. You think, you think, uh, everyone in the world should just ride a bike and everyone should get rid of their cars. Actually, I'm not. I actually own a car too. So I have to fight for parking too. I have to fight traffic too. Uh, the choice is, uh, do I ride a bike and try to keep one car off the road and keep the congestion down or do I drive? And that's just a choice I make every day. So I don't, I'm not anti-car. I own a car and, uh, but, uh, just, uh, consider, consider that. And I thank you for your time and again, I support this, uh, support the one-way on Baldwin. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, if we can hang up the line so we can get the next speaker patched through, I greatly appreciate it. Okay, the next speaker, 5.41 went right to voicemail, so we're going, moving on. Our next speaker, 5.42. We're patching the speaker through the system. Okay, we're just trying to get the speaker patched through. Okay, just a reminder, ladies and gentlemen, members of the public, just be, please be by your phone when you're getting the call from the office because we're not going to call you back. If you don't answer, it goes to voicemail. Okay, I believe we have our next speaker on the line. If you can identify yourself for the record, please.
Esther Wintner.
Okay, Esther, your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
Good evening. I'm calling to speak about the resolution with, um, regarding Bespoke Health LLC, the contract. I first would like to start by saying the, um, I feel very strongly about the, uh, the vaccine and the administration of the, uh, administering of the vaccine. I think it is critical and important to the well-being of, um, of all the residents of Jersey City. I start by saying, when I look through the council agenda and I looked at this particular document regarding Bespoke, one of the first things that stuck out to me was the address, 2109 Broadway. The reason I know this address so well is because I grew up in that neighborhood. I know that building, um, as being the Ansonia. At the time, it was the Ansonia Hotel and I took my piano lessons in that building. It's currently a residential building. In reading the proposal, um, well, before I go there, I also, um, understand that the Bespoke Health LLC is a newly formed company. So when I read through the proposal, one of the very first things, uh, that it says within it is that they are the preeminent concierge COVID testing and vaccination service. So this, um, for me is something that I don't understand because it is a fairly new company, um, just put in place last fall. Uh, some of the documents that were not included, uh, with the proposal, uh, or in, and information were things such as what type of insurance they have. I'd like to know if the company is insured and documentation of that. I also noticed that, um, there was no mention of who the head physician is, who would be, uh, directing this. Um, I don't know what hospital this organization is, um, has partnered with to do this. There are no certifications, medical certifications, uh, for this company. Uh, one of the things they talk about is vaccine storage. Uh, these vaccines that are given out, these messenger RNA vaccines are not vaccines that are, uh, refrigerated like the normal type of medication. These are, these are temperature levels that are very precise and cold storage. So when they talk about their storage of the vaccine, they give no documentation or explanation of how and where that's going to be done. The other thing that the proposal mentions is that there will be, uh, two clinical vaccination administration persons per site, which would mean that's a total of 12 people given the jab for the whole city. We have approximately 260,000 residents in the city. I don't know if that's enough, uh, people. They talk about their relationships with different EMS providers, but they do not tell us who those providers are. Will that be the Medical Center Ambulance Service? I know in looking through it that they have some kind of relationship with another organization or a company which looks to be their own company called Amblands. I, I know nothing about that company. I think we need to know more about that. Um, we need to know what type of ambulances they are, if they have, yeah?
Your time is up.
Huh. Okay, so I'm not done. I will, um, post this and, uh, unless the council grants me more time, I will just have to post this and get my responses that way.
Sure.
But thank you. And I, and I, and I hope that you, you put this on the table for further, uh, scrutiny because it's very important.
Thank you, Esther.
Thank you.
Um, speaker 5.43 went right to voicemail, so we're on to our last speaker, 5.44, I believe is on the line. Elizabeth, are you there?
Uh, yes, this is her husband, Jared Salter, speaking alongside Elizabeth.
Okay, well, Elizabeth is the one that's signed up to speak, so we're going to hear from Elizabeth, correct?
Uh, sure, I, I can, I can talk.
Okay, very good. Your time is going to start on my countdown. You're going in three, two, one, go.
All right, uh, first of all, I know it's been a long night. Thank you guys so much for, um, staying on and listening to us this evening. Um, I also want to thank those council members who responded to, um, my husband's email outreach earlier today. Um, I am going to speak in support of the safety improvements on Baldwin, Baldwin Avenue, the ordinance 20 dash 110. Um, by my count, I'm the 22nd person to speak out tonight in support of this ordinance. Um, I'm thrilled that we're having this discussion and I'm even more thrilled for the potential of improving the safety of the street that I live on. Um, in this neighborhood, uh, I do bike, I walk, and we do own a car, uh, regardless of commute choice. I am definitely in support of making it one-way. Uh, we live on Baldwin Avenue between Hopkins and St. Paul's. Um, and we've become unfortunately quite familiar with the dangers of this street. Um, I'm in support of the bike lane component, but really it's the safety of the street that concerns me most. It's clearly unsafe with the amount of accidents that we've been having. Um, I am in my third trimester. I'm expecting my first child in 10 weeks and I'm just concerned about the longevity of this neighborhood for our family primarily because of this issue. So, um, the safety of the Jersey City citizens is paramount and I believe urgency is required. Um, thank you guys so much again, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Okay, if we can hang up the line, so then we can move on to the rest of the meeting. Greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Alrighty, before we move on, council members, um, it's the president, council members, ladies and gentlemen, members of the public, I just want to state for the record, the moment of silence, if it wasn't stated correctly from me, it's Carolyn Oliver Fair. That should have been dedicated for the moment of silence. Carolyn Oliver Fair. Okay, I always wanted to make sure I had that name correct.
All right.
Thank you. Okay. Alrighty, moving on to petitions and communications. Any questions or comments on items 6.1 through 6.30? Hearing none, there's no officer communications report of directors. We have items 8.1 through 8.8. And on to our claims and addendum number one. So we'll be taking a vote on claims addendum, uh, claims and addendum number one. Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Sorry, I was on mute. Aye.
Okay, it's okay. Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson Lavaro.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Wardeman.
Aye.
Claims and addendum number one are approved unanimously 9-0. On to our resolutions. I'm going to be taking a vote on items 10.1 through 10.14. Again, items 10.1 through 10.14. Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Um, abstaining on 10.6, um, and then I am going...
Councilperson Solomon, if you, if you said your vote, I'm sorry, I, I missed it if you said you were going to abstain on 10.6.
Sorry, no worries. Abstain on 10.6, um, no on 10.9 and aye on all the rest.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry about that. Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
You're on mute.
You're on mute, Rolando.
Sorry, is Carmen on the call?
I don't think so. Is Carmen out there?
I don't believe she was asked to.
Right, she was the next to come.
All right. So, so just on 10.14, just asked that, um, um, and I, I think I saw some emails. I think Council President, you were, um, asking some questions and I think, I think there were emails to that, that question about, um, kind of accounting for the disbursement of funds and transparency on that. Um, and, um, would just, just request that that be a part of, uh, this process. Um, I'm not going to look to, 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 um, obviously these, these funds are necessary and it's long overdue to, to approve that. So, um, I will vote aye on all.
Okay, Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Wardeman.
Aye.
Okay, if you let me recap, please. Items 10.1 through 10.5 are approved 9-0. Item 10.6 is approved 8-0-1 with Councilperson Solomon abstaining. Item 10 point, items 10.7, 10.8 are approved 9-0. Item 10.9 is approved 8-1 with Councilperson Solomon voting no. And items 10.10 through 10.14 are approved unanimously 9-0. Okay, on to items 10.15 through 10.25. Again, items 10.15 through 10.25. Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson Lavaro.
Just give me one second. Um, just, I, I know we voted already on 10.12, just want to make a comment. I don't, I didn't receive the data on that. I voted yes anyway, but I'm still requesting the data on Gateway Park, um, to John Metro and his team. Uh, John, can you acknowledge that for me?
Yes, I believe Brian Waller circulated, uh, this information, but I'll come back.
Okay, thanks. Um, the 10.22, I think it is, or, uh, um, 10.21, um, regarding the claims, was there any additional information? I didn't receive anything there.
Uh, no, councilman, just that there was a, uh, a lapse in timing between the old issuance and the, and the new issuance of the, uh, of the, uh, um, contracts. That's all I had at this time.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm going to vote, um... second. On 10.21 and 10.22, I'm going to vote no, um, consistent with what I've, uh, my voting practice in the past, um, these claims, um, without, uh, any additional information suggesting why, they're just, um, uh, my, my opinion of failure of, uh, uh, of doing the job and getting contracts renewed prior to, uh, claims, right? So for, for the, for the public, a claim is simply a, uh, an unpaid bill essentially that, um, um, that wasn't authorized by the city council. And so, um, simply authorizing that payment after the fact, um, simply kind of, uh, giving, uh, allowing that, that practice to continue. So, so I'm going to ask, um, and ask your pre, your predecessor, uh, John, on this, that, uh, um, that there be more, uh, uh, stringent, uh, uh, management and oversight of this, uh, there's been too many claims, um, um, since the, 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 since Business Administrator Kakaleski has left. Um, he actually responded to those, uh, um, uh, those concerns that were raised by myself and the rest of the council and other members of the council as well, that, uh, claims are simply a failure or breakdown of, uh, um, kind of management and ability to manage our finances around that stuff. So ask that you, you crack down on that stuff. Um, with regard to, uh, um, 10.25, um, I didn't get to speak to, um, trans, the transportation planner on this. Um, I'm just going to say for the record that, um, um, I, I believe there's some sort of public outreach involved with this, uh, alternative transportation mode assessment. Um, you know, uh, as we currently are in the, in the master plan and, uh, and, and I've raised this, I think during, in caucus, um, whether it was the, the census or the master plan and, and outreach, um, whether just even tonight, we talked about the bike master plan and other, um, and other initiatives, uh, other studies and, and planning initiatives, um, that there were, uh, we need to make sure there's robust outreach to, uh, to diverse communities. And, um, and, and while, uh, understand that other communities have participated in that, uh, we have to reach people where they're at, diverse communities where they're at. Um, not everyone is on social media, not everyone responds to, to, to the email blasts and things of that nature. So, uh, how we, how we reach them, particularly in this COVID environment, um, is important and particularly when we look at, uh, uh, the, the studies for, for Baldwin Avenue and Summit Avenue and et cetera, um, others. So, um, similarly for this alternative transportation mode assessment, I ask, um, I urge you to have a robust, uh, outreach to diverse communities. Um, that being said, uh, I'm going to vote yes on all except for those two claims that I, I mentioned.
Thank you, Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Okay, if you can let me recap. Items 10.15 through 10.20 are approved unanimously 9-0. Item 10.21 is approved 8-1 with Councilperson Lavaro voting no. Item 10.22 is approved 8-1 with Councilperson Lavaro voting no. Items 10.23 through 10.25 are approved unanimously 9-0. Okay, on to our next set of resolutions. Items 10.26 through 10.38. Again, items 10.26 through 10.38. Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Sorry about that. Uh, no on 10.26 and aye on all the rest.
Okay. Thank you. Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson Lavaro.
On 10.27, um, what, what is the, uh, there, there were questions raised about, um, security of data. Um, I, I will admit, uh, Mr. Metro, that, uh, um, it, it, the description of this, the service and how it was going to be used, um, is very vague to me still. Can, can you give me another shot, take another shot at this and explaining what this contract and what this service will, will provide to the city? You talked about geolocating, um, as it pertains to the, the city's, um, uh, um, social media and being able to geolocate and triangulate, I guess, around folks who, who are liking or responding or commenting on various social media, um, as it pertains to kind of our Twitter, city Twitter accounts and the like. Um, can, can, can you give me a practical example of like, you know, some, something very real that like, you can use a past example as to how it would be implemented, how it'd be employed?
Uh, councilman, we went through this on Monday and I also issued a memo from Assistant Business Administrator Carrato with additional information on this to the council yesterday.
Okay. Well, explain it to me, um, for, for my edification.
Councilman, we went through this again on Monday and we have a memo on it. I, I think, um, we satisfied, uh, the request for the, for the resolution.
Okay. I'm going to, let me review the memo then. I have not done that, I'll admit. So, um, so I am going to hold off on 10-27 and I'll come back to that. Um, and, uh, I'm going to vote no on 10-26. And aye on all the rest.
Okay, Councilperson Rivera.
I vote aye.
Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Okay, if you can just let me recap. Items. Item 10.26 is approved 7-2 with council members Solomon and Lavaro voting no. Item 10.27, I'm going to come back to. Item 10.28 through 10.38 are approved, or all approved unanimously 9-0. Okay, on the balance of the resolutions, items 10.39 through 10.47. Again, balance of the resolutions, items 10.39 through 10.47. Councilperson Ridley.
Uh, abstain on 43, aye for all the rest.
Okay. Thank you. Councilperson Prinzieri.
Um, just very briefly, um, for 10.47, the Immigrant Affairs Commission met last night and they had wanted to include a letter of support of this resolution. Um, unfortunately, they did not, um, have the time to get it over to council, um, before our meeting. So I just wanted to say on behalf of the Immigrant Affairs Commission, they are, um, 100% behind it. And with that, I vote aye for all.
Thank you. Councilperson Bajana.
All right, I just want to explain something. I'm dead against what happened in Washington DC. I think it was a disgrace and disgusting, but I don't feel we as a council have a right to, whether it's Bush one, Bush two, Obama, Clinton, or any president have a right to include something like that in a resolution. That's why I'm abstaining. But as far as what happened there, it was a disgrace. There's a lot more to this and it'll be coming out over probably the next couple of months when the police review everything thoroughly. So that's why I abstained. Not that I'm against it, as I said, what happened there was a disgrace and, but I don't think we have the right to criticize any president, no matter who it is.
So, councilman, you're voting?
I vote yes on everything. I'm abstaining on 47.
Very good. Thank you. Councilperson Saleh.
Um, I want to vote, uh, yes on everything. I do want to, you know, echo, uh, Bojano's, Councilman Bojano's, uh, sentiment saying that it was very disgusting. You know, anyone who saw my social media was able to see that I was pretty much against, uh, everything that happened and I came out pretty quickly on that. Um, I do respect, uh, Bojano's opinion and I did get, you know, a lot of people that said council people shouldn't be opining about national events. And then I got people that said council people should be opining on national events. So, you know, I, there's one thing that I do know and Councilman Bojano loves Jersey City. It's in the root of his bone marrow, he loves Jersey City. And, um, I respect, you know, his abstention and I think other people should as well. Um, but I am voting yes for it. And when it comes to the bespoke health LLC, um, is Stacy Flanagan on the line so she could sort of dispel?
Well, at the end.
Okay, thank you so much, yes. Uh, just to dispel some of the innuendo and rumors and everything regarding that. And, um, I do want to say that I have full faith in Director Flanagan, um, in everything she's done so far during the course of this pandemic. Um, it was head above shoulders, uh, any other response in the tri-state area. It was earlier, quicker and, um, you know, Jersey City is doing the most and that's a testament to everyone on this council, you know, that you guys responded quickly. Um, so I vote aye on everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Solomon.
Very briefly, uh, I'll vote aye for all on 10-46. You know, I'll, I'll see what Director Flanagan says. I, I ask my questions, uh, at caucus, uh, you know, and I, my kind of view on the matter is we, we can't delay any longer, uh, have to get vaccines out, folks. And, uh, you know, there were some questions that were raised and so the director says that, that struck me as really legitimate about this company's expertise, but this is the group that, that, uh, the city's going with and, and they have to deliver. There's just sort of a, they've, they've got to do the job. It's 100%, you know, the, it, lives are on the line in terms of that. Uh, 10.47, I, I will state very clearly, you know, you'll get people to say you don't comment on local politics, you know, we don't comment on national politics here in local politics. And I think that's true for small stuff, but, uh, uh, an insurrection that was attempting to overturn a democratic election that killed five people, uh, that's one of the darkest days in American history. Uh, and, and if you can't speak up and condemn the president for, uh, directly, uh, uh, inciting it, you know, uh, i- it's sort of mind boggling. It is, it is the, the core foundation of a democracy. You can't have a democracy if, if people overturn free and fair elections, which was the president spent the last two months trying to do. Uh, and you know, in, in a year, all of us are going to be up for election, you know? And, and if, and if the election doesn't go the way we want, you know, we're all adults and we won't be happy, but we're going to say, you know what? We, we lost and, and we'll fight, uh, again the next day. We're not going to try to overturn, uh, the results. So I, I think we have to just be, be, there's a clear moral line that was crossed. Uh, it's been crossed for two months and it, it ended in, in bloodshed. So, uh, I'm grateful to, to Councilman Lavaro and every council member who, uh, sponsored that resolution. Uh, and so with that, I vote aye for all.
Thank you. Councilperson Robinson.
Aye for all.
Councilperson Lavaro. Councilperson Lavaro, you're on mute.
Sorry, um, can I go back to 10.27?
Sure.
Or you only just finished the vote here?
Why don't you finish the vote here and I'll take the vote on 10.27 after this.
Okay. So, so where are we voting from? Just give me the numbers. The end number.
Items 10.39 through 10.47.
So, um, on, uh, let me just take a quick look here. Yeah, so, so we have this on 10.40, we have the settlement here, um, in these matters and, um, we've had a number of these settlements in these cases with Chesler and Ascalis. Um, yeah, we, we need to look into how, how we ended up here with, with these massive settlements. This is massive, right? Like the dollar amount is over 300,000, if my recollection, without having pulled up the, the resolution to look directly at it. I believe it was over 300,000. The other ones were larger or si, or similar, uh, comparable kind of, uh, settlement numbers. Um, and then we have a number of, of, uh, resolutions and contracts for additional amendments to, uh, uh, agreements or, or new agreements, um, for, for similar lawsuits, uh, for the same case, literally, right? Um, and, um, this is the stuff that people have been raising and asking like, uh, what's going on here in public safety? And, um, for too long, we've been just kind of, um, voting these through, including myself. I voted for these and, uh, we need to disscrutinize these more closely and figure out what's going on here.
God. Councilman, if I may quickly just start correcting.
Oh, sure. Go ahead. Well, actually, no, you can't. Let, let me just, let me just be really clear.
Please, let, let, let the councilman finish and then, go ahead, councilman.
All right. So, so I, I, we, we should have a, we should have a closed session on all of these matters. Um, I am going to, uh, vote no on, um, 10-40, uh, 10, uh, sorry, I'm going to vote yes on 10-40 because it's a settlement, um, on that. And that's not the, uh, uh, the fault of the, uh, the plaintiffs in these matters. Uh, um, see, I'm going to vote, uh, no on 10-42. Um, I'm going to vote, vote no on 10-43, no on 20, 10-44, no on 10-45. Um, and then, um, did you say we're going down to where, Sean?
47.
All the way to 47. So on 46, um, I think, uh, Ms. Whitner, uh, Esther Whitner, um, spoke to most of the points that, uh, that I would have raised. Um, there, there's questions as to whether the, um, how, this company was recently incorporated. Um, the information literally in the, uh, in the resolution package itself indicates that they're, um, recently, uh, a new, new corporation. Director Flanagan herself and our caucus suggested they're a new corporation, that they were somehow folks who left, uh, a previous company or a spinoff of some sort, um, from Rapid Reliable Testing, um, which is a subsidiary of ambulance. Um, and if you look at the kind of information on both of these folks, um, if you look at what was listed as the two stakeholders in the document itself in the resolution, you have a gentleman by the name of Ari, um, I think it was, uh, Matit Yahu and Derek Rapsarada. Um, Derek Rapsarada being the president. Both of them were, um, were executives with the, uh, ambulance corporation and Ari Matit Yahu was, uh, uh, the vice president of both strategic, um, uh, marketing, uh, for both ambulance and, uh, Rapid Reliable Testing, both in a New York Times story in June 5th, 2020. Um, it's listed there. And so it remains a question as to whether he's also a, a, um, whether he still retains those positions and is also, um, operating on behalf of this company. Um, all of that on the face of it, none of it is, uh, um, illegal per se, even if he was operating in three roles in three companies, but it calls into question what, what the heck is going on here and what are we putting our money into at this point? Um, I, I, I will acknowledge the fact that, um, we, this is a dire situation and so vaccines, um, need to be implemented, um, but I can't, um, unfortunately, I can't, uh, um, vote to approve this, uh, contract under these circumstances. There's way too much, uh, um, information out there that suggests that, uh, there may be something, uh, uh, that, that there are left, leave questions unanswered. Um, also, there, there, there were questions haven't been asked and I'm not going to ask it today and hopefully we'll get a response and unanswered about the, the fixed tech medical, uh, contract as well that was presented to the council on December 16th. Um, and the salesman who was affiliated with that being Steve Kites, um, and Steve Kites having been self indicted, um, by this, uh, um, uh, by, by the federal for, for fraud, uh, accounting fraud, uh, for multimillion dollar accounting fraud, um, and whether that, uh, contract remains out there and what's going to be the status of that kind of moving forward. Um, so I am going to vote no on that one as well and yes and, um, yes and all the rest.
Okay. Voting no on 42, 43, 44, 45 and 46 and aye on all the rest, correct?
Correct, and I request a closed session on all of those, uh, those contracts I voted no on as it pertains to, um, public, the police issues.
Okay. Councilperson Rivera.
I mean, I think the fact that we can vote no on pausing on 10-46 really mind boggles me and it's so unfortunate that, uh, council members will actually politicize, you know, a, a, an emergency contract to, uh, to help out with the vaccine. It's like really weird. Uh, I vote aye on everything.
And Council President Waterman.
Sean, I vote aye, but this is the end of it, but I know, um, Director Flanagan is on and she could explain the vaccine and, um, some of the questions that Esther had. Okay, so when we close, you know, at the end, just let her give her that few minutes just to explain this vaccine because it is important and people want to know how it's stored. And I think that is important because it, it's, you know, it's a life and death situation for so many people.
Okay. Very good. If I can just recap the vote, um, on items 10.39 through 10. On items 10.39 through 10.41 are approved unanimously 9-0. Item 10.42 is approved 8-1 with Councilperson LaVaro voting no. Item 10.43 is approved 7-1-1 with Councilperson LaVaro voting no and Councilperson Ridley abstaining. Item 10.44 is approved 8-1 with Councilperson LaVaro voting no. Item 10.45 is approved 8-1 with Councilperson LaVaro voting no. Item 10.46 is approved 8-1 with Councilperson LaVaro voting no. And item 10.47 is approved 8-0-1 with Councilperson Bajiano abstaining. Before we get to Director Flanagan, I just wanted to go back to item 10.27, which we did not take a vote on. So I'm just going to add.
That's Councilmember LaVaro, right?
Right, LaVaro.
That's it. Rolando, you have to give your vote.
So we're just casting the vote for Councilperson LaVaro on item 10.27.
Correct.
So let me just say from the outset, just to say it's absolute nonsense to say I'm politicizing things. This is a million-dollar contract. The vaccine implementation, it was back in December 16. The truth of the matter is, an emergency contract can be implemented and has been implemented without council approval prior to it being, any of those previous contracts being implemented without council approval. So it actually could still be implemented without council approval, and they could just address our concerns around that and still implement the contract if they felt so strongly about it. But that's not going to be the case. And in fact, if you go back to the caucus minutes and on that, then facts matter again because some folks just like to ignore the real facts on these matters. The fact of the matter is that it was raised that, in fact, this is a new corporation. And it was suggested in the council caucus that didn't want to implement the contract until kind of got the sense of where the council, where we would stand on this contract. And clearly, again, you know, there's a, there's a reason why that was happening because in the past, again, emergency contracts have been implemented without necessarily council approval. And that's okay because that's legal and allowable because they're emergency contracts. That being said, let me move back to 10.27. John, I will apologize to you. I did get your memo. I just missed my, my staff did give it, bring it to my attention. So I apologize to my staff, too. I did have that information. I just inadvertently missed that. What I will say is that I did not see in review of the memo the concerns about relating to protection data and so forth, and data integrity around that stuff, and protecting people's privacy. I will also say that I'm just going to be very blunt about it, that I think there's the potential for abuse of the service for political purposes. Ironically, right, having that conversation, we're going into election year, and the idea of geolocating and being able to find where people live and what potentially what their identities and addresses are, where maybe, in fact, they preferred to be anonymous in their social media interactions. Instead, we're going to be able to geolocate them and find them with this sort of service, potentially, it sounds to me like. So that being said, I'm going to vote no on 10.27.
Okay, thank you.
So just to recap on 10.27.
I'm sorry, if I can make one other comment. And if I may ask, going back to the Capitol Hill riots resolution, I call on Councilman Rivera, who I know also, as we talked about Capitol Hill, I know he's had some complimentary things to say, that a gentleman by the name of Hector Vargas was just a little bit raw and that his heart's in the right place. I call on him to denounce because, as Councilman Solomon has pointed out as well, what happened at the Capitol Hill insurrection is an affront to all Americans, regardless of what your political standing might be. And to be able to sit idle on that and to know that people from our city were involved in that and were part of an insurrection and threatened the lives of our elected officials and legislators, regardless of what their party might be. In this time and in this moment, people need to take a stand and be clear about where they stand in these matters. And call on you to denounce any participation in those matters and to make sure that he's held accountable for that.
I'd like to, I'd like to share something like that. And I would like to piggyback on that as well. Yes, I did, there was a point in time in the summer where, I mean, I don't know Hector Vargas from a can of paint. I remember right before the holidays, he came to a city council meeting. And he reached out to my office because he was actually feeding homeless people on Journal Square. He was feeling, he was feeding homeless people in downtown, throughout the south side of the city. He called, he engaged with my fraternity, Talk Cap Epsilon, because he knew that it was a fraternity that had that same, those same... They did the same thing with feeding homeless. I engaged with him. I, we went to Goya, we bought, they donated food for at least 550 families. Some of those, some of that food, which was rice, beans, chicken, salads, about 80 of those meals, I cooked. They came out of my house, some of them came out of his house. And we gave these meals out. Again, just want to be clear, I didn't, I didn't know Hector Vargas from a can of paint. He's a Marine like me. And I felt that the brotherhood was genuine as a Marine, as a deployed Marine that he was. And I engaged with him. And when I defended him in the Facebook, it was, I defended him because they approached, people approached me saying that this is the type of person that Hector Vargas was. I don't know what they were accused, they were accusing him of so many things. But I specifically said, I don't know him like that. I didn't know him of being that type of tyrant. And I engaged with him. And I'm not going to hide that. I mean, I helped the man give food to homeless people throughout the city. And he was very, very, very vocal in the south and west side of the city. What he did in Washington, I had not spoken, I have not spoken to Hector since, I don't know, September, August, September. What he did in Washington was abysmal. I mean, what he did was totally uncalled for. I do not, I do not accept or tolerate anything that he did. And he should be brought upon charges to the full extent of the law. He should definitely do that because there is no place for someone like that to be part of the ridiculous, the ridiculousness that our president did that day in making sure that, the invitation that he did to go to Capitol Hill, that was totally unacceptable and uncalled for. And I condemn that type of attitude 100%. And I hope that Mr. Vargas gets what he deserves and again, to the fullest extent of the law.
Okay, Sean.
Everybody happy?
Sean.
If I can just, Council President, if I can just recap the vote on item 10.27, and then we can have Director Flanagan. Item 10.27 is approved 8-1 with Councilperson LaVaro voting no. And so now we're going to bring on counsel, I mean, excuse me, Director Stacy Flanagan, our Director of Health and Human Services.
Is the meeting over?
No. Director Flanagan is going to redress us regarding the resolution that was approved.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I heard some questions. And I think I guess I want to start with, Councilman LaVaro, at no point did I say I didn't want the council to get this. I tried to get this on the agenda. I'm actually really busy. I started work today at 6:30 this morning, and I'm still trying to plug along because that's every one of my days. And it's, they're long days. And if you knew the number of people in this city that I feel responsible for and every single death that I feel responsible for, when somebody has an opportunity to provide me with a solution to one of the problems that exists that I can't control, I'm going to seek a way to help the resident. And we met Rapid Reliable Testing through our lab partner when I couldn't sustain any more nurses. I think you all know that I lost a ton of nurses in the middle of COVID. We tried to hire other nurses. They're getting paid a lot of money in other places. And they don't want to be at a COVID testing site. They don't want to be at a vaccine site. And that was the feedback we got. So we brought in Rapid Reliable Testing because one of the labs said, we work with a partner. They're an ambulance partner. They own an ambulance company. You could do testing without nurses. You can actually do testing with EMS, and it'll be much more affordable for you. So anyone that's gone to Marin Boulevard since June has interacted with Derek Raspardo, who at the time was the relationship manager for the contracts that we worked on. Margaret and Derek and Gina Abouwan and Derek, they've all been working together since sometime in May, they were able to. And I think Peter Baker and John McKinney can tell you, turned things around very quickly for us. We needed a quick turnaround. And they got testing up and running in under two weeks in the beginning of June. When Derek left the company, in fact, I didn't know he left because I just, the lawyer stuff was all handled. A few months later, he reached out and said that he started a new company, is doing vaccine work. I said, that's awesome because I need to hire a vendor to do vaccine work. Why don't you send me a proposal? We've received several unsolicited proposals, a lot of them extremely expensive. And this is specifically for operations. I want to make that very clear because Fix Tech is not an operations vendor that was brought to our attention. They're a vendor that was doing masks and other things. And the Office of Emergency Management, the innovation team, we've been all working together for a very long time, going through series of labs, going through series of vendors. And the city had already had a vending relationship with Fix Tech with masks. So I said to Fix Tech, if you can pop up a pod, which is physical walls in places, sure, send me a proposal. We can no longer do that work because we no longer have CARES Act money. Because in order to do that, we would have had to spend the CARES Act money by December 31. That was not an option when purchasing. We put everything, we moved everything forward at the same time. Because if I waited another week, then I would have missed the last meeting of the year. I thought Bespoke was going to be put on December 16 as a walk-on. That's what I was told. It didn't make it, and here we are. We started our, and as per purchasing, we did start today. We had an amazing day. We, we've been doing this for quite a few weeks. The last two weeks, we kicked off the first of January, more or less, the second. We do have a medical director. The medical director for Bespoke is Dr. Hardwick. He's approved by the New Jersey Department of Health. Bespoke has been approved by the New Jersey Immunization Information System. And they have vetted the company just like we have on our side. I don't think it's a crime to be an entrepreneur. I don't think it's a crime to live on the Upper West Side. There were significant number of police and fire that came today along with some of our healthcare workers to get vaccinated. There was not one single vaccine wasted. That's happening in hospitals across the country. We are not a hospital. We do not operate a federally qualified health clinic. And if we want the same services as we get in New York and other cities that had federally qualified health centers, we need to invest money. Before, we did invest money, just to be very clear, because the rhetoric and the rumors and the really distasteful ways that people are approaching this, the mayor told me to go to the hospitals. And he said, I don't, there's no money, go to the hospitals. I did go to the hospitals. I went to all three federally qualified health centers. I said, how can you help the city get vaccines to the people? How can you do it so that the people don't have to show an insurance card? So that you can be focused on immigrants, so that it doesn't come in English and Spanish only? And, and I don't know my, something's going on with my, I forget. So I think the issue, I think I'm trying to not share, is that I did call the hospitals. They are operating closed pods right now. They realize that there's also not any money to make in this and therefore said to me, if I can't charge insurance, how am I going to make money? Are you going to pay for it? I said, whatever we need to do, our city is going to get people vaccinated. I believe that we all believe that. So if the processes, which still, again, today, the hospitals are closed to the public, they're not open yet. I am working with the hospitals to try and open them to the public so that we have more than six sites. But when I started the process, they told me they wanted to be closed pods. I filled out that survey for the Department of Health, and they were closed pods. And so points of distribution for vaccines. I've worked very closely with the Office of Emergency Management. I've worked with the Office of Local Public Health. We want to make sure that we have vaccines for people and traveling. So we tried to coordinate getting all of the buses paid for last year so that we have now two health buses that'll go around town and make sure that they address all the homeless, people that live in areas where we can't pop up a local site. So there weren't many people that came to me and said they could do that. And having the experience that I have of Rapid Reliable's work, two guys that left that company to start a new company, I felt pretty confident that when I asked them to come to every single one of the city department buildings to do testing, they could. When I asked them to go to every authority, when I asked them to show up at the housing authority at nights, when I asked them to go to the churches on weekends, they seemed to be able to do that. So the people that I was working with when they left the company, I was disappointed. I have new people that work at RRT that are excellent and have been very supportive. But that working relationship showed me that this team was ready, willing, and able to do everything necessary for Jersey City to get what we needed done. They've committed to me that any, any new hire that they have would be local. If there are people that need, they are looking for EMS. They did hire people locally at RRT as well for the testing sites. I think Esther gave some great points, some questions that we had as well. They gave me a very general proposal because at the time, the Department of Health, of the New Jersey Department of Health, did not know which vaccines our city was going to receive. So they could not tell me cold chain storage for Pfizer versus Moderna. I will say, they're completely skilled in data logging and cooler preparation and transfers. And if you even saw the pictures this morning from the back and forth, they've been working and training alongside all of the health professionals of the state and have been invited and welcomed in by the state because the state was excited to see a non-pharmacy group. So Rite Aid has been hired by the state. CVS has been hired by the state. And Walgreens has been hired by the state to do vaccines with our senior population, with our LTC population, home healthcare aides. And they're all closed pods. They're not open to the public. So we had very limited options. And when people were coming to me saying they wanted to charge me $200 or $300 per vaccine when we were getting a vaccine for free, that wasn't an option either. So, and we are not an agency that can charge insurance. So that would have cost us another few hundred thousand dollars to start charging insurance. So there's a lot of things behind the scenes that no one realizes that we don't operate like New York City. We don't have 11 health and hospitals propped up. We have two hospitals that work separately. And through us, we try to ask them... We have two hospitals that work separately and through us, we try to ask them to work together. And we are making that happen, but they're not ready yet. So today, we were able to get started. They are still not ready yet.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Director. Thank you. Okay, Sean.
You so much.
Thank you, Director.
Hey, thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Director Flanagan. So with that being said, if anyone that has any other thing to add, we have a motion to adjourn at 10:34 PM.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, so the motion was made by Councilperson Prinzieri. And the second was made by Councilperson Rivera. On the motion to adjourn at 10:34 PM, all council members present by acclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
We are outta here at 10:34 PM. Thank you so much, Council President, council members. Ladies and gentlemen of the public, thank you so much for your patience during the meeting. And I'd like to thank my staff, Amanda, John and Marlene and of course Bernadette. Without you guys, these council meetings wouldn't go as smoothly as they do. And when you're out and about, please make sure you're masking up because we're far from over with this virus. So with that being said, have a great night, stay safe, everyone.